Together and we are privileged today to have our resource management plan. We're going to start off and welcome the Virginia Beach Public Schools Operating CIP, Trenays Riggs, Dr. Spence, Melis Ingram, and Crystal Pate. Thank you. Trenays, welcome.
How are you guys? Okay, is this on? Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, where'd she go? And members of City Council. On behalf of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, I'm delighted to present to you the Virginia Beach City Public Schools Fiscal Year 2023-24 Budget Document. This budget is a culmination of many months of work and planning and showcases the school division's priorities. And as you know, we have been working for years to be truly competitive regarding compensation. And this budget is the closest we have come in recent history to meeting that mark. We're really excited about it. In this 930 million points, 930.7 million proposed budget, the School Board has shown its commitment to the following. One, employee compensation, recruitment, and retention. The spending plan allows us to make strides on both our unified and instructional pay scales by making our step structure more consistent and making our starting salaries more competitive. Two, school safety and student support. With school threats and extreme behaviors on the rise, the Board and administration thought it important to prioritize not just safety measures in the event that an incident occurs, but also mechanisms by which we can prevent events before they happen. This budget focuses in on behavioral support positions as well as bolstering our safety and security processes. And finally, VBCPS has seen a 75% increase in our English as a Second Language, which is ESL, community over the last decade, which means we must allocate the needed resources to support them. This proposed budget includes an additional 15 ESL teachers, lessening the caseload of our ESL teachers will ensure they are better equipped to serve our ESL students. This Board also understands the importance of supporting capital improvements across the school division. The Capital Improvement Program, the CIP, addresses large maintenance needs, including renovation and replacement projects such as re-roofing and HVAC improvements and site improvements. The CIP also funds the school division's modernization slash replacement program. Although increased costs have been projected due to inflation, the proposed CIP fully funds the Princess Anne High School and the Betty F. Williams Bayside Sixth Grade Campus replacement projects within the six-year program. I want to thank our City Council members for their unwavering support of VBCPS. I was just telling someone today that if it wasn't for you guys supporting our programs and supporting us like you have, we would not be the top school system, I feel, in Virginia, but especially in the Hampton Roads. And that's why the people come here and because they want their students and their children in our schools, and it's very obvious. I know that teachers and people that have left and gone over to Chesapeake realize the resources and the support they get from Virginia Beach is so much different than where they get in other schools, and they realize it once they leave. So thanks to you guys that support us so well for that. It's important for me to let you know that we really appreciate that. The Board looks forward to continuing our partnership and to ensuring Virginia Beach City Public School continues to be a world-class school division that our Virginia Beach community can be proud of. And with that, it is my pleasure to introduce the Superintendent of Virginia Beach City Public Schools, Dr. Aaron Spence.
Welcome, Dr. Spence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon to you, to members of Council, also Mr. Duhany. Good afternoon to you as well. So this school year has been a real testament to the hard work, dedication, and resilience of our staff, our students, and our families as we keep navigating the challenges that are associated with interrupted learning. It's also been a year where issues that have surfaced over the last several years continue to challenge us. So teacher recruitment and retention remains a challenge for us, as you've just heard, safety concerns and student behavior are issues, as are mental health challenges, and those have risen to the top of our list. It's equally important that through our budgeting process, we respond to the changing expectations of our state and our community, continuing to address expectations, for example, of the Virginia Literacy Act, as well as changing standards and assessments in science and social studies. And also essential is meeting the needs, as you've just heard, of our growing English-language learner community, as well as those of our students with disabilities. And we have to continue to demonstrate that our students can recover from these past challenges and thrive in the future. As such, we know that accelerating learning, supporting our struggling learners, and providing a world-class learning experience for each and every one of our students remain our top priorities in VBCPS. So in our budget proposal, we don't shy away from talking about our challenges, and we don't shy away from talking about the opportunities in front of us. We think it's important for you and for our community to be aware of the reality we're facing, while also understanding that our future is bright, especially when we support our public schools in Virginia Beach. It's our intention with our budget proposal that our School Board, our families, our staff, and our community are able to make the connection between the expectations for the school division and the budget priorities that we have outlined. I'll talk a little more about staff compensation. The proposed operating budget does provide us with the resources that we need to run our school division every day, and importantly, offers us the opportunity to provide a competitive salary and benefits package to our employees on both our unified and our instructional scales. Offering attractive salary and benefits packages bolsters our ability to recruit and retain an exemplary workforce. And we know that for years, we've been working little by little at being competitive in the job market, not only for our teachers, but for our support staff as well. What I hope we're all realizing with the incredible shortage of professionals in education today is that in this climate, it's going to take more than incremental change. And we're proud that this budget positively and aggressively ensures that our staff is compensated competitively in the market. In December, we presented the Board with the findings of a 2022 compensation study that we conducted in partnership with the Siegel Group. What we found was that in order to meet the Board's compensation philosophy goals, which put plainly are to be the best in the region so that we are able to compete for the talented teachers that we have coming out of the state system and also teachers in the region, we needed to increase employee salaries across multiple positions. The study assessed both the unified and the instructional scales, and recommendations were made to address deficiencies across those scales. And the proposed budget allows us to correct these deficiencies, again, on both scales. As Ms. Riggs noted, we're doing that by making our structure more consistent. What we found in the study was that we needed to redesign the pay scales and make percentages between the steps more consistent throughout this, throughout this structure. And the goal there is to increase employee retention by ensuring, by ensuring steady salary growth and predictable salary growth over time. So this proposed budget fully funds the compensation study recommendations for our unified and instructional scales at just over $53 million. It's also important that we honor our staff for all of the work that they put in, both inside and outside the classroom, which is why for the third consecutive year, we've also budgeted to continue the phasing in of increased allowances for those employees with advanced degrees, something that will also make us more competitive in the local market where we remain behind our peers in compensation for advanced degrees. Of course, there are other issues that need to be addressed. As has been mentioned, safety and student support is critically important, particularly, as you know, with the recent incident in Newport News, we have been hearing, and I'm sure you've been hearing, from parents and concerned citizens who are wondering about safety here in VBCPS. It's very important for us that our community knows that we're constantly assessing and improving the safety and securities of our schools and offices. Division leadership and our dedicated team of safety, security, and emergency management experts continuously evaluate ways to best support the safety, security, and mental health needs of our students and our staff. Of course, this work isn't new. Those of you who were here in 2018 remember that we convened a Blue Ribbon Panel with leaders from the city, the Virginia Beach Police Department, NAS Oceana, and members of our community, who delivered a set of recommendations that continue to guide our work in this area. Since 2018, for example, we've enhanced our security assistant positions and implemented ongoing training requirements for these individuals. We've installed security desks and buzzer systems in all of our buildings, and we've implemented the Raptor Visitor Management System in our schools. We also conduct annual security audits at every one of our schools and do regular reviews and trainings to reinforce safety and security procedures, as well as our expectations with staff and students. More recently, we've begun phasing in armed school security officers in our schools. These are retired law enforcement officers, and they are there to support our school resource officers and to provide an additional layer of assurance to our stakeholders. We've also phased in 15 additional security assistants in our elementary schools. We were able to do that with a $562,000 grant from the state's School Security Officer Grant Program and Fund. Our proposed operating budget includes $668,000 to move these positions into the operating budget in the new fiscal year. The operating budget also includes funds to convert additional security assistant positions to school security officers. Other grant-funded safety and security enhancements include a school security equipment grant of $60,000 sponsored by the Virginia Department of Education. We received that this school year. We're using that to purchase digital two-way radios for selected schools. We'll also purchase installation of additional surveillance cameras. We've also received the Community Oriented Policing Services School Violence Prevention Program Grant, or the COPSCRAN. That was in the amount of $389,000. That federal grant is sponsored by the Department of Justice and Bureau of Justice Assistance. This money is going to address a critical need for effective communications during an emergency or critical incident, and will implement an integrated mass communications and emergency notification system known as RAVE. This system is going to enhance the ability of individual schools and school division leadership to prepare for, respond to, and recover from emergency incidents. And it is worth noting for you all that VBCPS will be partnering and coordinating with the City of Virginia Beach on the use of this system. There is, of course, more work to do, and I think it's important to address the fact that we have seen more issues with student behavior in these last few years around the division, around the state, and across the nation. We've also seen extreme behaviors, and more of them occurring with younger age groups than ever before, kindergarten, first grade, second grade, things we didn't see before the last four or five years. So the conversation around school safety has many layers, but we also know that student behavior is a big part of it. And that's why, on top of making security improvements, like those that we just talked about, we're also continuing to focus on behavior and mental health by proposing three additional behavior intervention positions in this budget. These positions work directly with teachers and principals on students with the most challenging behaviors, and these additional positions will allow us to provide more consistent services across our schools. As you heard Ms. Riggs talk about, enrollment of ESL students has increased by 75% over the last nine years and 28% over the last three years. So we have a growing number of students in Virginia Beach who come here with English as a Second Language. In fact, you may not know this, but there are over 90 languages spoken in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Additionally, we're experiencing greater increase of ESL students who are enrolling, who are testing at the lowest English proficiency level of one. So on January 31st, we opened our International Welcome Center, which sits within the Family and Community Engagement Center at the Plaza Annex. This IWC is a one-stop shop for ESL families who need assistance with registration, academic planning, and navigating our school system. While this is an important step forward, we also need to do more. The average caseload for ESL teachers at the elementary level is 45 to 55 students across two or three schools. We have to ensure appropriate state-required instructional time for these students, and decreasing caseload in the number of schools serves is going to allow us to do that. So that is why, in this budget, we do have additional ESL teachers. There are other needs addressed in this budget as well. They can be found on the budget balance sheet, and they include 12 additional school-based positions which support teachers and students. This includes nurses, general assistants, administrative assistants, and a literacy teacher. We are recommending the move of our NJROTC instructors from 10 months to 11 months to allow us to recruit into those positions. We've also budgeted funds for site-assigned substitute positions. These are permanently placed substitutes because we have difficulty filling our substitute positions. We also have included pay for our new teachers to attend orientation activities in the summer, and there are some cost increases that are accounted for in there, including in our CSEP Autistic Spectrum Program, our CSEP Re-Ead Program, as well as costs to cover increases, budget to cover increases in fixed costs, utilities, fuel, telecommunications, waste management, landscape services, and then other costs due to inflation. For example, graduation expenses at the conventions are. So the reason we're on such firm financial ground today and the reason we're able to continue to provide our students and staff with the support we do is thanks to you all, of course, as Ms. Riggs talked about, also to our award-winning budget and finance staff and to our School Board. VBCPS continues to make its mark as a school division that is determined to chart the course for each individual student, and that includes inclusive and meaningful learning experiences, along with the social and emotional supports and skill building that will prepare our students for long-term success. So we wouldn't want to leave without celebrating some of our successes. And so here are just a few of the accomplishments for VBCPS that are supported by you and by this budget. For the 14th consecutive year, we've continued to maintain record levels with respect to our on-time graduation rate, which stands at 94.9% for the 2022 cohort year. We also have a low dropout rate of 2.9%, and we outperformed Virginia's rates of 92.1% for on-time graduation and 5.2% for dropouts. Another indicator of the remarkable success of our school community is the Virginia Department of Education pass rates from the Standards of Learning Assessments for the 2021-2022 school year. Even under the extraordinary circumstances of the past several years, we remain accredited, and students in VBCPS outperformed all local districts in reading, writing, math, and science. We also outperformed seven other comparable divisions in Virginia in reading and mathematics for the first time in recent history, demonstrating that our teachers, our staff, our students, and families have remained engaged and focused on education and on our students' well-being. VBCPS was also awarded the School Division of Innovation Designation for efforts aimed at providing students more rigorous, relevant, and real-world learning opportunities that help them demonstrate life and career-ready skills and result in an actionable plan for their graduation. As a part of that, academic and career planning is now mapped from elementary school through graduation. This highlights that VBCPS is intentional about when and how our youngest students begin to be aware of careers and how their choices shape their opportunities. We believe that providing work-based learning experiences for all students is a necessary part of preparing them to go out into the world. It's demonstrated through our work to expand the robust work-based learning models at the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy, the Advanced Technology Center, and the Technical and Career Education Center to all of our high schools. It's also supported by the hiring of a full-time work-based learning specialist in the fall of 2021, and the development of systems-to-scales models at the three sites we mentioned. The Nursing Schools Almanac has ranked the Virginia Beach School of Practical Nursing Program as the top licensed practical nursing program in the state in 2021, and the program is also ranked number one by Practical Nursing and Nursing Process magazines. Since the Industry Credential Program began in Virginia Beach City Public Schools, over 140,000 industry credentials have been earned by VBCPS students. Every year, students have access to over 100 different credentials that link to career fields. Even during years with interrupted learning, students have earned more than 10,000 credentials annually as a validation of their career readiness, and we expect that to continue. And I've just realized I've not been clicking along, but that's okay. We're in the success mode, there's only two slides. VBCPS recently collaborated with Newport News Shipbuilding to create the Apprentice X Program. This program offers 39 and a half credits via distance learning from the apprentice school. This is just the latest example in the continual expansion of dual enrollment in CTE, which currently includes our Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow Program, early childhood education at the Tech Center, welding, Cisco Network Administration, veterinary assisting, hotel management, EMT, and the entire Associate's Degree in Business offered at the Entrepreneurship and Business Academy at Kimmsville High School. As you know, we prioritize creating and fostering meaningful partnerships to enhance student learning opportunities. As such, we have teamed up with Naval Air Station Oceana on Project Search, which connects high school students with intellectual and developmental disabilities to internships and on-the-job training. NAS Oceana is the Navy's first installation in the country to host this innovative program, and our partnership supports our military families and provides pathways to building student independence. And then, the Environmental Studies Program at the Chesapeake Bay Foundation's Brock Environmental Center, which celebrated its very first graduates last year, continues to set the bar for sustainable education. The program offers a unique opportunity for students to expand their understanding of sustainable economics and business innovation, social sustainability, environmental sustainability, and natural resource stewardship. It's the first of its kind in the region, and it's preparing students for a fast-growing market in careers that are creating meaningful change to protect our planet and our city. Great Neck and Salem Middle Schools have earned distinction as advancement via individual determination or AVID National Demonstration Schools. AVID is a college readiness system designed to level the playing field for all students by providing access, equity, and supports to students in the academic middle. These students are often first-generation college students and have been traditionally underrepresented populations. Students learn to develop and refine their skills to best prepare to become successful lifelong learners. We started using AVID in 1998, and 22 schools now use the program. I know you know that we care deeply about each and every student's academic experience, but also their overall social and emotional needs. And one of the ways we're working to enhance those experiences is through the recent hiring of our family outreach representatives to help traditionally underserved families navigate the educational process. Along with that, we have launched the Language Ambassadors Program, using volunteers to help welcome families whose first language isn't English into our schools. VBCPS has also hosted hundreds of family connection webinars to support our families, and recently held our second annual Back-to-School Care Fair, which served thousands of families by providing free backpacks, haircuts, vision and hearing screenings, a vaccination clinic, and more. For demonstrating a major commitment to supporting students and families connected to the nation's military, 46 Virginia Beach schools were named 2022-23 Virginia Purple Star Schools. Awards are presented by the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children. Our Bayside Sixth Grade Campus was recently named a 2022-23 National ESEA Distinguished School. The school was acknowledged for demonstrating exceptional student performance for two consecutive years. Interestingly, every year, only two schools from each state receive this award, which is presented by the National Association of ESEA State Program Administrators. Bayside Sixth Grade Campus is the third VBCPS school in the last four years chosen by the state of Virginia for recognition, along with Parkway Elementary and Rosemont Elementary. Old Donations School was named a 2022 National Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Department of Education as an exemplary high-performing school, one of only 273 recognized public schools across the country, and they join a list of other previously recognized VBCPS Blue Ribbon Schools, including Windsor Oaks Elementary, Tallwood Elementary, and Great Neck Middle School. As you heard Ms. Riggs talk about, we also understand the importance of supporting capital improvements across the division and how they help ensure positive learning and work environments for our students and staff. The CIP program addresses large maintenance needs for our over 11 million square feet of facility space by investing in our existing infrastructure through renovation and replacement projects. It also funds, as you heard, our modernization and replacement program. While a tremendous amount has been accomplished over the last 20 years, there's still a lot left to do. The next three replacement projects prioritized in the modernization program are estimated to have an average age of 75 years when replaced, and the next schools prioritized in the program are estimated to have an average age of 116 years when replaced. As aging buildings result in increased maintenance costs, we've worked diligently to create a strategic document that deals with our maintenance needs and new construction. You heard earlier about the funding for Princess Anne High School and the Betty F. Williams Sixth Grade Campus within the six-year program. The proposed CIP also increases funding for the replacement of Bayside High School. And of course, as you know, the School Board and City Council have recently approved the PPEA interim agreement for design services for these three schools. We have begun work through that interim agreement, which will last roughly a year, and which will include finance, planning, public input, and planned efficiencies in design. In addition to this work, the completion of the classroom addition at Lynn Haven Middle School is approaching with a fall 2023 opening that will support an Achievable Dream Academy's secondary school program. As we look ahead, we've been working together with city staff to identify and to strategically increase funding sources other than debt through the employment of grant opportunities, pay-go, and reversion funding. And of course, we all understand it's important that we continue capital improvement conversations with our city leaders, legislators, and community in order to further support our schools and our city. As you can see, VBCPS is more committed than ever to providing the best possible experiences to meet the needs of our students, our staff, and our families. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Crystal Pate, our Chief Financial Officer. She's going to delve further into the details of the finances.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, stuck. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, and Mr. Duhany. I'd like to start by prefacing that to date, the General Assembly has not approved a new state budget. As you probably are normally aware, Virginia's budget plan is supposed to be pretty much done by April, except for any late changes in the governors, by the governor. This is the second year in a row the General Assembly is uncertain when the budget will get done and what will be in it. The latest word from the governor is he will call a special session for the state budget as soon as they need one. He is urging lawmakers to work together to send him a spending deal as quickly as they can. He indicated Virginia's financial forecast is encouraging. He's optimistic on the budget that will get done this year and that the state is tracking ahead of the forecasted surplus. We do know the governor and the House are wanting an additional $1 billion in tax cuts for individuals, while the Senate wants the funding to go entirely toward public services with investments in education, healthcare, and teacher pay. The General Assembly did approve what was essentially a stopgap budget for 2224 to fund vital services, but there are still key spending proposals that need to be figured out. The governor believes that he can cut taxes and still make investments in behavioral health, law enforcement, and education. So with that in mind, note that this proposed budget, approved by our School Board, is based on the governor's amended budget introduced back in December of 2022, along with the more conservative House amended crossover budget released back in February 2023, which provided additional state revenue of approximately $4 million. We are hopeful that after negotiations, the final approved state budget will provide additional funding over and above this $4 million. This fiscal year 2023-24 budget proposal is likely to be one of the more aggressive proposals we have had. Dr. Spence spoke of our challenges, and it's not a secret the staffing is at the top of our list. In order to put VBCPS in a competitive compensation position, this budget sets out a path to ensure we have put the most resources we could into our compensation package so that staff are paid for what they deserve for the work they do each and every day. This portion of the presentation covers mainly the School Operating Fund. The Superintendent's Estimate of Needs document provides a great deal of information on our budget development process, on details on the School Board's funds, our budget priorities, challenges, and highlights, information on special revenue funds, historical enrollment, and budget expenditures per pupil. There's also a section on personnel resource allocations, staffing standards, and guidelines. This slide before you shows you the total amount for all funds totaling approximately $1.14 billion, with the School Operating Fund being the largest piece of the budget at approximately $931 million, or 81.7% of the overall budget. You can see that categorical grants comprise 12.5%, or approximately $142 million. Other funds, which include the Instructional Technology Fund, Athletics Fund, Equipment Replacement Fund, Vending Operations Fund, Cafeterias Fund, and Textbooks, is 5.4% of the overall budget, or approximately $62 million. Then we also have Green Run Collegiate, which is a public charter school, which is 0.4% of the budget, or approximately $4.4 million. This next slide shows you our revenue sources and related percentages that comprise the School Operating Fund. As you can see, the local contribution from the city is the largest funding source at 49.1%. is the largest funding source at 49.5%. State funding, including state sales tax, make up the second-largest resource at 48.6%. The federal source comes in at 1.5%. Other local sources of revenue make up 0.4%. And this is the second year of the reduction in the use of one-time funds in our school reserve account, and that represents less than 0.1%. Over to the left, you see a chart that shows the estimated additional revenue over the fiscal year 2023 adopted budget from all sources to be approximately $58.2 million. And again, that is based on the governor's amended budget along with the House amended crossover budget. Over half of this additional revenue, $31 million, is the estimated increase in state revenue, including sales tax. There's also additional revenue from the revenue-sharing formula with the city, which is the amount provided in the city's five-year forecast of $27.4 million, and that is adjusted for debt service and $2 million of PEGO, which comes off the top. And this is not updated for any additional estimates that may relate to the over-underperformance of city revenues. As mentioned during our five-year forecast presentation, we are in the second year of phasing out the use of one-time funds in our school reserve account. So we are reducing the revenue source by 50% of the fiscal year 2023 budget, so only about $334,000 is being used to balance the budget for fiscal year 2024. When we look at the School Operating Fund by major category classifications, you would expect the instructional portion is the largest at 73.3%. Operations and Maintenance is the second-largest portion at 11.9%. Pupil Transportation is 5.5%. Admin Attendance and Health is 4.8%. And Technology is coming in at 4.5%. It's important to note that these specific categories are prescribed by the State Board of Education and listed in Virginia Code. Our chart of accounts is built around these categories for budgeting and reporting purposes. On this slide, it shows our school operating expenditures by type. As you can see, we are a very labor-intensive business, and combining our personnel and fringe benefit costs total a little over 86%. The remaining non-personnel expenditure types total almost 14%, and most of that 14% is non-discretionary due to items such as ongoing contractual obligations, fuel, utilities, et cetera. And so only a small portion of that 14% allows any discretionary spending or flexibility. And there on the side, you can see the corresponding dollar amounts for each category type. So as mentioned earlier in the slide, we are estimating additional revenue over the fiscal year 2023 adopted budget from all sources to be approximately $58.2 million. Our number-one priority, as you've already heard in developing this budget, was compensation for staff. This next slide shows the proposed budget includes approximately $55.5 million of the $58.2 million in estimated additional revenue for investments in our employees. As you were made aware of, that we went through a compensation study with the Siegel Group, and out of that study were recommendations to revise our instructional pay scale, a three-phase approach to redesign our unified pay scale. In addition, there was a creation of a new professional Level 2 pay grade for positions such as psychologists, social workers, physical and occupational therapists, and behavior intervention specialists. To implement the recommendation to adjust the instructional pay scale step increments to 1.5% between steps throughout the structure and move employees on the scale up a step for one-year experience comes out of a cost at approximately $37.2 million. To upgrade positions identified as high-priority positions, which include bus assistants and custodians on the unified scale, upgrade other positions on the unified scale as identified as being below-market, and realign positions as a result of these upgrades, and redesign the unified pay scales so for years 0 through 14, there's a 1% between steps, and for 15 years and up, there's 1.5% between steps. And also move employees on this scale up a step for one-year experience cost. And that cost comes in at approximately $15.1 million. And again, the last change was the creation of the professional instructional Level 2 pay grade on the unified scale for those positions I just mentioned at a cost of a little over $1.1 million. There is $1 million toward the year 3 of phasing in an increase in allowance for advanced degrees, $300,000 to provide a $1,500 stipend to special ed teacher assistants, which is a very difficult position to fill, approximately $445,000 to complete the phase, and of increased allowances for teacher assistants and security assistants who hold a bachelor's degree, and approximately $246,000 for new teacher orientation pay. So with the remaining additional estimated revenue of about 2.7, we did include some other items that we believe were essential in order to maintain the service being provided. As mentioned, Dr. Spence's opening remarks, our English as a Second Language population has increased substantially over the last years, again, testing at the lowest English proficiency level. In order to accommodate this program expansion and need, the added 15 ELS teachers come in at a cost of approximately $1.3 million. We also included three elementary administrative assistants to ensure all schools with 600 or more students have a minimum of a .5 administrative assistant based on criteria of free and reduced lunch, SOL scores, special education students, and referrals. With the increased demands on elementary schools to administer SOL growth measures three times per year, the disruption to the instructional program and supervision of students has become significant. There's also been an administrative assistant at Landstown Middle based on projected increased enrollment, and one administrative assistant for Bayside High School based on increased enrollment, which includes a higher percentage of free and reduced lunch, English language learners, and chronic absenteeism. And as mentioned, we included funding for site-assigned subs, behavior intervention staff, and clinical staff where the need is warranted. It was mentioned also earlier the concern about safety and security in our school division based on recent events. With a continuous evaluation of this area to ensure the best support is provided regarding the safety, security, and mental health needs of all students and staff, we included funding of approximately $980,000 for additional security assistance at our elementary schools, which is the second year of phasing this in, and additional cost of a little over $300,000 to convert middle and high school security assistants to school security officers. We also have $1 million for the additional cost for CSEP, Autistic Spectrum Program, and Reeducation Program. And to account for increases in various contractual obligations, additional funding of approximately $2 million was added as well. There's also an increase of approximately $1.9 million for expected increase in fuel and utilities. And finally, to balance this proposed budget, we made approximately $5.6 million in some baseline adjustments to personnel and fringe benefits, line items using current spending levels to establish future funding requirements, and realign positions taking into account estimated enrollment. We also were able to do some targeted reductions to non-personnel line items, where we believe the budget would be reduced based on expenditure patterns of approximately $1.3 million. So we feel this budget for the second year focuses on compensation. Based on additional estimated revenue, 95% of this additional revenue is dedicated to some form of compensation. And it's extremely important, as you've heard earlier today, that when it comes to staffing, that VBCPs remains competitive and attracting and retaining highly qualified teachers and staff. So at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Ms. Melissa Ingram, Executive Director, Facility Services, to present the proposed CIP budget information.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pate. And good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, and City Manager. Again, my name is Melissa Ingram, and Executive Director of Facility Services. I'm going to talk a little bit more in-depth about the CIP program, which Dr. Spence and Ms. Riggs had begun speaking of. Looking at the school division's capital improvement program, we have up here, as part of our modernization program, our fiscal year '24 CIP proposed highlights, including three replacement projects. CIP 1-015, Princess Anne High School replacement; CIP 1-028, Betty F. Williams Elementary-Bayside 6 replacement; and CIP 1-029, Bayside High School replacement. The updated anticipated schedules for construction start, or when the project would be bid, and construction completion dates are a result of some inflationary impacts and level of funding being received. These projects are planned through the CIP under Design, Bid, Build, our traditional method, which estimates in costs and timelines reflecting that. As you know, a PPA process for design services was approved by school board on February 28th and by city council on March 7th for these projects, and is currently underway. Approvals obtained, any approvals obtained after the interim agreement is completed for procurement with PPA for construction services would be anticipated to move these timelines you see here up. So in this year's proposed CIP, VBCPs operates with facility space of over 11 million square feet of space, which requires much contribution to renovations and replacement projects, which you can see here in front of you. We have $33 million funded for '23-'24, which would address a variety of needs: HVAC, roofing, various, and grounds. Also included are very important safe schools improvements, funded roughly $200,000 a year. Energy performance contracts, ongoing cost of $46.5 million, with this year for $2.5 million for weatherization, lighting, and other energy-saving projects at our schools. And we also have elementary school playground equipment replacements at roughly $250,000 a year. Following are the three new construction projects we just reviewed. Princess Anne High School replacement, with a new project budget of $24.7 million, would be fully funded in the six-year CIP with a tentative opening date of 2029. This is followed by Williams-Bayside 6th Grade Campus, which is also proposed to be fully funded within the six-year CIP at $81.8 million, new project budget, and a tentative opening date of 2031. And finally, Bayside High School replacement project, which has funding sitting outside of the six-year CIP for a total project budget of $385 million and a tentative opening date of 2039. So considering all of these projects over the course of the six-year CIP capital program, we're projecting forward to fiscal year '28-'29 from year 1, our currently-proposed '23-'24 is $735 million, including appropriations to date. Year 1 anticipated to be at $62.8 million, which is lower than last year with state construction grants received last year, and unfortunately, not this year. These figures include anticipated reversion funding, which were approved by city council on March 7. So as seen nationally and internationally and locally, inflation over the last several years has increased significantly from previous trends of historical data that we have had available related to inflation rates and cost per square foot of school construction costs. With data available from the Virginia Department of Education, which reflects school construction costs throughout the Commonwealth at a historical rate of 5.6%. In front of you is a visual representation of the last time inflation and cost per square foot data was reviewed prior to the pandemic in 2020. While DOE has a great amount of information, please keep in mind that the data is self-reported and could be missing some information and cost escalations that may be incurred as projects progress. Please also keep in mind that cost per square foot considers construction costs only and does not consider all other aspects of the project budgets as detailed in the CIP schedule of activities. These would include design services, contingencies, furniture, overhead support, and inspections that comprise the whole project budget, which you see in your CIP program. So you can see from this historical data here from 1999 up to the projected 2025, with Princess Anne High School in the projection, and at this time, prior to the pandemic, was a possible cost per square foot of $450 per square foot for this new school. Our last high school built, Kellum High School, bid in August 2011 at an average cost of $210 per square foot, which was in line with the average cost per square foot for high schools that year throughout the Commonwealth of $203 per square foot. So on our next slide, with inflation having been volatile over the last three years as a result of the pandemic, supply chain shortages and labor shortages, we worked with a consultant these last several months in order to get a more detailed look at the impact that inflation has had on historical trends and future rates for new school cost construction. In front of you is the historical DOE data per year that the project would be bid. In the left-hand column is compiled data of all three school levels: elementary school, middle school, and high school. And as you move right, you can see individual data for elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. As we discussed in the previous slide, Virginia DOE data is not inclusive of the complete cost for the project budget. But you can also see the compiled data looks at this data in two different ways: as building cost only on the columns to the left in each category, or the total cost, which would be the columns to the right, which would include the building and site construction costs, which is what we have to consider when replacing our school facilities. You can see from 1999 that the average cost per square foot was $106 per square foot. You can also see in 2019, the average cost per square foot of school construction was $300 per square foot at all levels: $286 per square foot for elementary schools, $293 per square foot for middle schools, and $350 per square foot for high schools. Corresponding yearly inflation rates for combined data is reflective of when we last looked at this data through 2019 at 5.96% across all three levels. Below this baseline data, pre-pandemic data of 2019, we continue to review more recent data that shows the volatility of the pandemic impact on inflation rates in years 2020, 2021, and 2022, which are on the bottom of your screen. You can see that these three years not only had much more of a limited dataset for us to look at in terms of school construction costs, but also had very volatile inflation rates, which was hard to gain some trends on. rates, which was hard to gain some trends on. So we looked at some comparables with our consultant in terms of other construction costs. And some inflation rates here that were reported by DOE had inflation rates as high as 40% in just the last year of 2022. So we're now looking here after having worked with our consultant, you can see 2020, '21, and '22 have been more normalized for our Virginia K-12 construction. You can see some comparables that we looked at with NAVFAC data and independent cost estimators, which have historically have also had different historical cost per square foot rates. Looking at this chart, we're looking forward to two of our replacement schools, this is for high school, school construction, Princess Anne High School and Bayside High School. We're estimating that Princess Anne High School, based on the level of funding being received, could bid in 2025 at a cost per square foot of roughly $575 per square foot, while Bayside High School is estimated to bid in 2034 with a projected cost per square foot of approximately $986 per square foot. We will, of course, continue to watch inflation rates as we adjust CIP figures annually. However, we have projected budgets based on these figures at this time. And so this is a visual representation of a historical and projected funding. You can see that starting in roughly 2008, funding did not keep up with the roughly 5% inflation rate we had experienced over the last 20 years. Our current fiscal year 2023 is outlined in orange, where you can see a decrease in funding this fiscal year compared to last fiscal year, when state construction grant opportunities were made available last fiscal year. You can see as we move forward to year six of the projected funding, we continue to have diminished buying power as you compare it to inflation and get further behind on projects. Unfortunately, delays due to funding not only impact our new construction projects, which are outlined in our modernization replacement program, but also impact our maintenance costs for our aging facilities. So on this slide is the new proposed fiscal year 24 CIP modernization schedule, with new construction dates starts and completion dates that have been moved back and updated project costs as impact by inflation that we just reviewed, making these buildings roughly 75 years older when replaced. While we can't control the impact of inflation, we have to plan for it in our budgeting. As mentioned, we will continue to review inflation annually as we consider updated project costs. Updated project budgets totaling roughly $714 million, with Princess Anne High School at $247.2 million, Williams Bayside Sixth at $81.9 million, and Bayside High School at $385 million. As we discussed, the remainder of the identified schools to be replaced will also have timelines moved back and project costs go up. As noted, these dates are estimated based on current levels of funding inflated 3% annually. Projects would begin to be over 100 years old after the next several projects, right around the time of completion of First Colonial High School and beginning of Kempesville High School. All schools would have a new average age at the time of replacement of 116 years, looking forward in our modernization program. So we're now looking at our funding sources for the CIP and where those funding is coming from. Charter bonds is one large source of funding, followed by public facility revenue bonds, which you can see as we move forward in a six-year improvement program, start to decrease as PEGO outlined here as well, or cash increases. With a possible sale of Bayside Sixth Grade Campus after the replacement of Williams Bayside Sixth, interest sale of property funds would be reflected on this chart as another source of cash. The energy performance contract funding at $2.5 million, and lastly, reversion funding, or again, another source of cash as PEGO increases through to year six of the proposed CIP. This funding source is labeled Alternative A and includes reversion funding approved by city council on March 7 for a total of $62.8 million in year one. This also assumes no contribution from state construction grants, which is not anticipated in this upcoming fiscal year. So in front of you is the funding summary for Alternative A, which includes reversion funding, again, approved by city council on March 7. This funding summary includes updated project budgets as impacted for inflation for the three replacement schools that we looked at. And again, Princess Anne High School will be fully funded in year five of the proposed CIP. Williams Bayside Sixth Grade Campus would also be fully funded in year six of this proposed CIP. Bayside High School continues to have funding dedicated to it, with funding sitting outside of the six-year proposed CIP. You can see changes in yellow from our last approved CIP with year one with reversion approval having been approved for HVAC and roofing, as well as an impact on various from state construction grants made whole with reversion funding as well. So thank you for your time today, and happy to take any questions.
Okay, any questions for any of the presenters? Barbara? Hey folks, why don't all four of you come up?
Well, I have two topics. The first one, and since you just completed the CIP, questions about the Betty F. Williams and so forth. The first part of it, help me understand why that's such, why that's an unusual campus? I know it was two schools kind of put together, and that's why you've got fourth and fifth and sixth and not your normal middle school.
So it's two separate things. So you have the tri-campus, which includes Newtown, Diamond Springs, and Betty F. Williams. They are individually three schools, which make up five grade levels, sixth grade levels including kindergarten. And then you have the Bayside Sixth Grade Campus, which was separated from Bayside Middle School. During a conversation with the State Department of Education, that school was not meeting state accreditation expectations, and you had to make a decision. There were a couple of different things that could have been done. One of the things you could do is separate it out and create a separate school for the sixth grade class, and that was the decision that was made prior to my arrival. So the decision now is to, if we're going to rebuild Betty F. Williams, is to go ahead and build the Bayside Sixth Grade Campus alongside that. We want to get them out of the old Aragona Building, that really is a facility that needs to be shuttered. And we know there's been some conversations with the city as well about potential future use for that property with Aragona. And go ahead and put that over on the Betty F. Williams property combined campus, similar to what we have with the Landstown Middle School, Landstown Elementary School campus. And you have a little savings there because you're going to have some shared facilities, like your cafeteria and potentially your gymnasium. And that'll allow us to carry that program forward, but you know, we have the space and the opportunity to build it over there and shutter the Aragona Building.
I just was kind of wondering why you didn't use this opportunity of replacement to make a normal middle school over there, but you feel like this is still the ongoing in the future right thing to do?
We do, and the Bayside Middle School, you know, seven to eight campus is a workable campus with continued life span.
It's kind of different over there from everywhere else. We understand and we hear so much about Betty F. Williams being in such bad situation. I think we were both thinking in all kinds of ways. Why are you doing that after Princess Anne? Why aren't we pulling that one forward if it seems to have so much problem with the physical plant? Why are we waiting?
Yeah, so it's all directed in the long-range facilities master plan. That was a study that was done in 2017, involved the community, a great deal of community input, and then ultimately was adopted by the school board. That study outlines the schools which need to be replaced first, and there'll be another study done, we do them about every 10 years, so 2027 would be the next time we would begin that process in 2026. But right now, that's the direction of which schools go. Princess Anne High School is in dire need of repair as well, really of replacement as well. It is one of our oldest high school facilities and has significant issues also.
Part of it was rebuilt after the fire in the 90s, so that's...
Yeah, the front piece of the administrative complex, yeah.
I'm a Princess Anne High School graduate, so I knew the school well. On the other aspect of things, with all that you're doing with the employee compensation and so forth, we're trying to meet the requirements of the study. I mean, is this all of it in this year, or is this just the beginning of some more things that we would need to look at?
This is most of it. This doesn't fully fund the, this is a phase in of the unified scale, changes to the unified scale. So instructional scale basically is teachers, counselors, and specialists, and then everybody else that we employ is on the unified scale. And so this doesn't fully fund what would have been the ultimate recommendations for the unified scale, so that would still need to do a little bit of work there.
But there's more to come in another year?
Yeah, potentially, yes ma'am.
And then just my other last question, dealing specifically with the behavior question of young children. And I had noticed in our human services budget that we are hiring two child and youth rapid response staff to provide screening with assessments to elementary school children, da-da-da, identify. Is this together with the, what you were, I believe you said you have three employees?
Yeah, so three behavior intervention specialists, yeah.
All together in one program? I mean, R2, R3, or?
Yeah, I mean, we work together very closely. So as you are aware, we have a mental health task force. Well, you may be aware, we have a mental health task force. That mental health task force includes folks from Virginia Beach Mental Health, and we work very closely with city services to support our families and our students who are in need. I don't know specifically how that budget request came about, but my assumption is it came out of conversations about need. We genuinely have a crisis with our younger students in terms of their mental health and in terms of their behavior, and we do have a significant lack of support in the community for that. And that's not an intentional lack of support, that's just the clinicians aren't there. And you know, interestingly, we hear from CHKD, one of the really alarming things I heard from CHKD recently was that the, you know, the emergency room at CHKD used to be, if you went to the emergency room at CHKD, kids were in there for falling off their bike and cuts and those things. The number one reason children are now going to the emergency room at CHKD is for mental health crisis. And so if you think about that, and then you think about how that's translating into our schools, we have a dire need for positions to support our teachers and our principals, and a dire need for a great partnership with the city and with city mental health, and I suspect that's why that's in there, to kind of get back to your question.
Also assume that maybe it has something to do with making certain that we're looking at the whole family as a unit and...
We have to.
That's what we have to do, and I think that's what we really have to get back to. I think we used to have it a lot with the Pendleton Project. I know there were some questions about not having that any longer, but important that we are looking at the total family, so I hope we're doing this together, supporting that.
We are, and you know, you mentioned Pendleton. We do have a base program that we built in the budget over the last several years. It's not in this budget, but over the last several years, we've been able to build it. It's a similar program, although not to the same scale as the Pendleton Program. One of the conversations that we will likely have during the design process for some of our new facilities is, is there a need for something similar to what you just talked about?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else at this point? Amelia?
Concerning the sixth grade campus, it appeared that they got an award, and so I feel that was a good move for you all separating that area. And like Barbara mentioning about the Betty F. Williams and so forth, I was there during Read Across America, walking around, and yes, to find out some of the rugged area. I said, why is all this rugged, and says, well, there's asbestos under there? So it's like a Band-Aid that has been put in place because of the situation. So for me, it would have been good having Betty F. Williams and Princess Anne kind of up there since they're both in crisis. Other thing I noticed, you mentioned about the ESL programs that you have, and you said 40 students to one...
Forty-five to 55 students per teacher.
Per teachers, which is huge.
That's a big number, right? And so that is why we've added these additional positions into this budget, so that we can reduce their caseload. The goal ultimately is to have them not working across any more than two schools, those teachers, and that, this will get us pretty close to that, not having to work across more than two schools.
Okay, and which schools are rarely impacted by ESL? Is it all across the board or only certain schools?
Most. We certainly have some schools that are impacted more so than others, but most of our schools will have some ESL students in them. But if you look, for example, Cook Elementary School has a very high ESL population, so there's some schools that have a significantly higher population of ESL students than others, but almost all of our schools have at least some ESL students in them.
And one other to do with, you didn't mention too much about the free and reduced lunches. Has that gone up significantly?
So that number...
Impacted mental, kids being prepared?
Yeah, so free and reduced lunch continues to climb in Virginia Beach. It's, I mean, I think it was, I actually can't pull the numbers off the top of my head, but it was around 30% when I got here, and it's closer to 50% now. So that number goes up. That is, so if, in case anybody's watching this doesn't know what that free and reduced lunch is, that's, it's not the federal poverty level, it's different than that. It is the level at which a family of four would qualify for subsidized lunch, either free or reduced cost, that the federal government pays for. It's not at the federal poverty level, it's fairly close to it now, but yeah, that number continues to climb in Virginia Beach, and there's no doubt that, I think all of us understand, and certainly the research bears out the impact of poverty on childhood, trauma adverse childhood experiences. So there are some correlations there.
And I remember, which of you spent time on that competitive salary? Can you give me a little bit more?
Well, 53 million is what's in there to address the compensation study. So to be clear about the board's goal, the board's goal was to be best in the region. We have not historically been best in the region. We haven't in many cases been close to best in the region. In fact, we've been fourth or fifth in the region behind Newport News, Norfolk, Hampton, and Chesapeake at certain steps on our salary scale. So we were traditionally pretty good at the entry level, and then by years five and 10, we began to fall behind our competitors. And so for years, you know, we've been having that conversation, and there's been advocacy by our staff to, hey, we need to get competitive at every level, and that's a retention issue for us, because if you can go across, you know, the border and make more money, you may do that if you're a 10, 15-year teacher, and we don't want to lose our veteran teachers. Those are people we've invested a lot of time and energy in, and they're our best teachers, and we need to keep them in Virginia Beach. And so what this compensation study does is it corrects our scales, so that we have a consistent step increase between each level, each level of experience, and so you can see steady progression over time. And by doing that, you know, how that works is if you begin to change how that looks between levels early in the scale, it increases the higher end of the scale. And so by doing that, we have moved ourselves to be either at number one or number two at all levels of our scale.
And I applaud you for that. Yeah, because we need these teachers, we need to continue to be at that level, because one of the things in this area, Virginia Beach, people boast about our education level as a city. Not only the faculty and teachers that you bring in, the students, this is what attracts them because of our school system. And to me, that is very important. As you know, I'm a retired professor and also a teacher, and seeing that not only you're talking about it, but we're getting letters from parents saying, we want to see this because we want to be, continue to tout being number one. Okay, Tenez?
I want to add something to that. I've heard from several teachers already, just me, that they were planning to retire, but seeing this new budget presented, it has convinced several, and that's just talking to me, I'm sure there's many, that have decided to stay and hope that this budget's passed because they finally are seeing some change that they need to see, because they've been working a long time and not receiving the compensation that they truly deserve. So we're hearing already from teachers and people saying, we're not going to leave if this budget passes, and their plans were, I mean, they were putting their papers in. So I just wanted to make sure you heard that, too.
I also think it's, if I could for just one more minute, important to provide context for the challenge we're facing. So the number of teachers who are entering teacher prep programs in this country has declined 35% in the last five years. And obviously, the demand for teachers isn't going away. If you've looked at our information, you see we're hiring about 600 teachers a year. And the top three systems in the state of Virginia could hire every single teacher candidate coming out of our state's public education programs. So we are not just trying to get the new teachers coming out of those programs, we need to be competitive regionally to make sure that we don't lose our teachers to other systems, because we don't have anybody in line to replace them. And truly, I think our country is going to have a reckoning in the next decade with teaching, because we're finding it harder and harder to find people who want to come into the profession. And so we have to make it palatable for a young person to come into this profession, and we have to be competitive as we do that.
Thank you for your answer, because it's important. I have one final to do with that 40% square footage, 40% increase. Can you speak a little bit more about that?
Yes, so during...
Microphone, please.
Yes, so during the pandemic, there were, some construction costs went down, a lot went up, and went as high as 40%. When we saw that, that's when we decided to work with an outside consultant to really look at, you know, normalizing those kind of anomalies that we saw in the last three years. You know, you had some negative inflation rates, and then some inflation rates, as you mentioned, as high as 40%. So that second chart that I showed in your packet really looks at school construction costs moving forward with outside consultants, third parties, that looked at commercial construction, as well as school construction, as well as military construction. As you know, schools differ, have a lot of different amenities in it that are needed for the educational curriculum. So we thought it was important to really look at those three years and not just say, oh, it went up 40%, but really to look at it and see what it was doing against commercial construction as well. And we definitely did see higher inflation as we moved forward, rather than the 5% inflation rate that we've been seeing historically, it was recommended that we use a 6.18% as the inflation rate ends up stopping to increase as it has been doing the last several years. And then, as we mentioned, we'll continue every year with the CIP to relook at inflation and see what it's doing, but it's definitely, I know for other city services as well, has taken a toll on our maintenance costs, our construction costs, and other costs throughout the division as well.
Okay, Jen?
Thank you, Mayor. Have you all given thought to the impact of the up to 4 cent reduction in tax assessment on what you've proposed here?
Yeah, we have, and Crystal and her team have looked at that. As you heard her talk about, we did cut 7 million from the operating budget before we put this budget together, and that was where we were looking at historical spending trends. So we feel like, you know, one area we would look at is the PEGO funding in the CIP. That would probably be the first area we would look at, and then the next area we'd look at, again, it's 85% of our budget, and it's the only, it's one of the few non-fixed costs in the remainder would be compensation. So we would have to reduce what we've put forward for compensation by whatever gets reduced.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, Josh?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick follow-up on the inflation information that you put in front of us. I'm trying to square these two sheets here, where there's a trend line that identifies the cost for Princess Anne High School, the cost per square foot of about $450, and then I think a couple slides later, there were some forward-looking projections that put it in the 575 range. Can you explain maybe what I'm looking at?
Absolutely, and that's similar to the answer I gave to Ms. Hammond, as she asked. So as you can see, what we did is 2019, we didn't have any negative impact of the labor shortage, the pandemic, and things like that. So we separated the data with the impact of the pandemic for 2020, '21, and 2022. So as you can see, we had, in the high school range, we had no one building new high schools. Either there was labor shortages, or you had some bidding, and the construction cost was so high, we're even seeing that now, that they were not able to complete it with the budget that they were allocated. But looking forward, when we looked at the compiled data, you know, that's where our 40% was seen there. But what we did is we went and relooked at, we also looked at historically NAVFAC data and other commercial construction data, normalizing it, because they have, again, different rates of inflation historically over the years. And so what we did was normalize the 2020, 2021, and 2022 data, so that we weren't looking at that high, outlandish 40... 40%. And we normalized it to, you know, 2020, there wasn't much going on, so really, it only increased 4% the cost per square foot. We then started to really see the impacts of the pandemic as they became more longevity and more real, to 11%, and then 15.41%, which we just saw in 2022. Anticipating that 2023 will start to move downward and trend up to 2026 for the cost per square foot, and then have a steady inflation rate of 6.18%. And again, this is looking at Virginia K through 12 new construction costs. But we did a look at this in comparison for other commercial type of construction, and looking at their historical rates compared to the school construction historical rates to get these trend data here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Well, folks, I think we have a lot in common, both in a negative way. You know, we're both coming out of a couple of years of COVID. We're both bitten by inflation. And the thing is, you know, somehow we have to strike that balance that we consider both as the city and schools to pursue the excellence. You know, once again, you know, salary is paramount, you know, especially to professionals. But the other, you know, thing, you know, working with the other mayors in the city, as we can confront youth violence, one of the things they talked about, the importance of, you know, getting to, you know, students early, and, you know, to really help shape behaviors and modify behaviors and, you know, things of that nature. And, you know, whether it be conflict resolution, you know, talking to a lot of the mayors, and also, you know, teachers in other jurisdictions are having the problems also with behavior in the classroom, which makes it an unsafe environment, not only for the students, but for the teachers. And how do you, you know, discipline and, you know, restore water and everything. And, you know, it's an important thing. And, you know, Dr. Spencer and I had, you know, discussions about, you know, hopefully using our city's Hope Initiative, that we're going to be working on, you know, integrating and coordinating mental health issues, physical health issues. You know, we're talking about hopefully getting mentoring programs and role modeling programs out there, workforce development, you know, that provides a path to maybe a lot of students that don't want to go to college. So these were important things, and we're grateful for your participation as we go forward with this, you know. But once again, you know, we're in a very, very challenging time right now, and, you know, we just got to put our hearts and minds together and come up with a solution that provides that necessary balance we need to move forward. But also, it's incumbent on us that we, you know, through economic development, create those revenue streams that'll enhance our revenues in the future, that will make life a little bit more easier for all of us. Okay? All right, Chris?
I had one question. Thank you all for the presentation. Like with a few things over the last couple of months, projects have kind of taken us by surprise. As we looked at the modernization plan, and as a liaison with our Vice Mayor, Rosemary Wilson, do we foresee any other unsolicited bids coming for maybe the next three schools? Because that would play in the next three to five years--
Yeah.
--looking at the CIP?
Really hard. I mean, no, we don't foresee it. We didn't foresee this unsolicited bid coming. So, I mean, that's sort of the nature of it being unsolicited. But if, it depends on, I would suspect, Michelle, that it's going to depend on how this moves forward. So if during the interim agreement, we were able to get a good price for three schools that moves the timeline forward, that allows for some innovation in terms of how we can finance the projects, it wouldn't surprise me for other people to take notice of that and say, hey, maybe we want to try the same thing. If we get to the end of the interim agreement, and we all look at it and say, this isn't tenable, it's not workable, I would imagine there's a significant investment of time and energy on the part of the solicitor. I would imagine that other people would look at that and go, we're not investing in that to have that as the end product. That'd be my best guess.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks a bunch. And thank you all for coming, and we look forward to continuing and building on our relationship. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, our Public Works Director, LJ Hanson, will give the building CIP.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. It's my privilege to deliver the CIP for the fiscal year '24 through '29 Facilities Capital Improvement Program. For new members of City Council, it might be worth pointing out that the Facility CIP involves more than actually our facilities, our municipal facilities. It also includes other elements such as fire and some police, large-scale capital improvements. This just is one of those areas where it gets put into because it's convenient. But with that being said, we have 27 total programs and projects that are proposed that do not need an increase in funds. And I'm happy to say 27 that don't need an increase after what I have presented on roads, coastal, stormwater. I'm pretty excited about that. We do have four that are requesting an increase in funds, five new programs that are new, so they would need programming. And we, overall, we have a total program of about $417.5 million, of which $251.9 million has already been appropriated. So among those projects that have no change, I have a couple of slides here that have no change, but I did want to point out a couple that are requesting funding in year one. Beach maintenance facilities, $2.86 million. And then the Creeds Training Center, about $1.5 million. And again, these are no change from previous, but those are, will be in year one. Additional projects that are listed here with no change, a couple of projects where we have small amounts of funding, building rehabilitation with up to $1 million in year one. And the last slide, again, projects with no change. Total budget for these projects is $300 million. As I mentioned, we do have four projects where we're requesting modifications. The projects that are identified in red are projects that were previously identified as part of the fund reduction scenarios. And I'll speak on them just a little bit more in depth as we move into those. So again, these are projects that we are asking for a modification. The first one being the Convention Center Capital Maintenance. The Convention Center now is, has been in operation for 17 years. It's still an excellent facility. We're still very proud of it. But at 17 years, we do start to see a few things that require a little bit more attention, a little bit more love. And with that being said, we're asking for an additional $459,000 in year one. Overall, additional $7.04 million. The next project, as I mentioned, we do have fire apparatus in the facilities, fire apparatus, four. And four is really just, as we move through in time, it went from one to two to three to four. There'll be a five and a six at some point. So there's really no, there's no significance behind that four. But we are asking for additional funding in year one. And that's for two reasons. One is, we have an increase in costs to provide fire apparatuses. The increase has gone up rather significantly. And the second, rather more significant issue for us is the amount of time it takes to deliver a fire apparatus. We used to be able to order a fire truck and get one in about 18 months. Now we're looking a lot closer to 30 months. And so if we were trying to replace two fire apparatuses every year, all of a sudden, our whole schedule has been shifted by a bit there. So we're asking for an additional $805,000 in year one, with an overall increase of 4.830. Also, on the fire side of the house, the fire facility rehabilitation and renewal. This is a program that we've had in place. We've put about half a million dollars into it every year. As you can imagine, a firehouse is intensely utilized. You have firefighters that live there 24/7, 365. And I'll be honest, they're tough on them, because they're in and out, they're trying to get off to the next call, or they're coming back from a call. And as you can see, it's just a facility that takes a fair bit of, a fair bit of maintenance to keep up. And some of these facilities have a little bit of age on them. And so we're asking for an additional half million annually, so that we can try and stay ahead of the curve, so that we can properly take care of them, and we don't have to get to a place where we feel like we need to do more significant or replacement. Again, a half million annually, over the course of the CIP, $3 million increase. We do have a couple of new projects that were proposed. The court modernization study, we did ask for money in year one of the CIP at $350,000. We feel this is necessary. Again, like the Convention Center, the court is still, the facility itself has still got a lot of life left in it, but it's getting to the place where we have some technology issues. I'm sure you're all aware about the escalators. That's a later project, but that's not part of this. But there are other areas where courts have asked us for a little bit of assistance in helping them to stay ahead of some technology curves, and just take care of the building and make sure that it lasts, that it not only lasts, but that it does the purposes for which we'd like it to do. And so we're asking for $350,000 to help us kind of put together a study, understanding what all the issues are, and then program that out over the course of the next several years. The law enforcement training academy replacement, LITA, I've given presentations on that. I'm sure council's very much aware of where we are. $350,000 is the amount that we set aside to do a study, so that we could identify a potential landing spot for where it would be a good idea to put LITA, and then also refresh the study that was done to talk a little bit about the needs, so we can have some idea of what we're going into. And we hope to be able to come back to City Council with some good recommendations at the conclusion of that study. The Housing Resource Center renovations, we've asked for $3.3 million in year one. And this is really to help us stay ahead of the curve. We're asking to expand the facility for 30 shelter beds, and also to start looking at its future, and where we believe the HRC is going to go, and what it needs. And to create this space, we have several ADA issues that we're wrestling with. We're also trying to make sure that we're wrestling with safety and security for the staff and for the patrons. So it is an involved process. But again, we have that money penciled in for year one. Also identified as a new program, mounted police maintenance and repair. This is out year dollars, but the mounted police stables, it's been there a while. And it's starting to see, it's starting to see some age and some use issues. But we have programmed that as out year money. We'll come back with a little bit more information as we get closer to that. Likewise, out year money for the oceanfront aquarium parking phase one. I know Cynthia gave a presentation to this body, talking about what the plans were. One of the very first things that she identified was the need for additional parking across general booth. This would be out year money. This first tranche of money, $3.75, is design and study and design, and study and design money. And that, again, is penciled in for out year money. And then lastly, I wanted to give City Council just an update on some projects that I know that you're all interested in. We're not asking for any funding. This is not tied to CIP, but we thought that it would be helpful for you all to understand how we're putting the money to work that we have right now. Burton Station is completed. It's occupied, and we're very excited. We have some punch list items that we're working on, but we'll be closing that out in the near future. Building formerly 1, 2, and 11, now it's currently 3, 2, and 11, is progressing along very well. Building 2, we're very excited. I think you can see, just even on the outside, how much progress is being made, and we're very much looking forward to being able to do some tours, maybe towards the end of this year, with an opening early next year. Of course, once police move into Building 2, that will free up Building 11. We'll be able to start working on the public works part of the, and that'll be the last building that's tied there. Oceanfront Restrooms, they're underway. And while these pictures are a little bit, they don't look like they're very much done, most of the significant work is done, and we anticipate that they'll be ready and open for this year's busy season. We're anticipating them to be open by June 1st. Likewise, the oceanfront police station, or substation precinct 2, we believe that that will be open by June 1st as well. And they're making a lot of progress in there. What a change. What a really different facility that that is now. And I believe that PD will be very happy with their facility, and I think it'll represent the community well. And as I mentioned, the Judicial Center escalator replacement, that'll be taking place this year. We're very excited. I know that that has been a continuous source of heartache for the judges and for the patrons that visit the Judicial Center. Those escalators have just been a real thorn in our side. We believe that we have a much more robust escalator system in place, and it should serve the patrons for many years to come. And then lastly, the Parks and Recreation Construction Yard. This is ARPA money. We will be, I'm expecting to go to construction January, excuse me, I think go to construction late this year, that's correct, with completion in March of 2025, well in time for the ARPA closeout. And then lastly, challenges and initiatives. These are the same that unfortunately have been put up for all of our CIP. It's the same thing that you just heard from Melissa. For schools, inflation, labor shortages, the same. And so with that, I would be happy to entertain any questions that council has.
Any questions?
Well, one thing I have to kind of giggle about was the escalators, because I think Worth was with me at the Norfolk State of the City, and people clap when they're moving pavement, is going to work on it. So people notice little things like these, which, you know, impact just a comfort. I'm happy about the fire station, and go by, at least pass by it, and one day I'm going to go on in. But this has made a big difference along, you know, that area. And also, you all doing the safety for the police station at the oceanfront. And where are these restrooms going to be?
We have one at 20th, Sean?
38th Street restroom was--
So 20th is the correct one. Okay, all right, thank you. I just wanted to double-check. So we have one at 20th Street. That's the one that will be open in time for this year. 30th Street, we don't own the land that that sits on, and so we have not been able to take on 30th Street at this point.
But it will make a big difference for our visitors.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hey, thank you, my friend. Takes a lot of money to run a city these days. Thank you.
No, it's a disproportionate amount of even--
At this time, I'm a personal director of Parks and Recreation, against the Parks and Recreation Operation. I just followed by Chad and Worth, against the Parks and Recreation, after you budget.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. How are you doing?
Good, good. We're just going to get this up in one second here. Okay, thank you. Honorable Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of council, I'm honored to be here to present the manager's fiscal year '24 recommended budget for Parks and Recreation. So really quick, we have four major focus areas. I believe you're all familiar with them. First and foremost, we manage and maintain all the city parks. That's over 290 properties, all the athletic fields, picnic shelters, dog parks, skate parks, bathrooms, parking lots, athletic fields, you name it. Millions of visitors per year, and we have just a great system out there throughout the city. We also operate, as you're also well aware, our seven stellar recreation centers, receiving over almost one and a half million scans per year. That's people that walk in and scan their membership cards, so we get a lot of use. They're very well utilized. We're the largest childcare provider in the city, operating four licensed childcare centers at four of the seven rec centers, as well as before and after school at all 56 elementary schools, through a tight partnership with the school system. And on top of that, we maintain all city properties throughout the city. So every roadway right of way, every pump house, fire station, police station, library, municipal center, oceanfront, anything that's green and growing, we help maintain for the city. So those are our four main focus areas of our services. Here's an overview of the fiscal year '24 recommended budget, which right now currently stands at just at $79.6 million, with about 875 FTEs. Those FTEs do include the 5.9-- Those FTEs do include the 5.9 FTEs that council has already approved for the Parks After Dark program. So if you want to see where the money goes, this slide tells tells you where things pretty much how they're spent throughout the city on our services, with the largest chunk, of course, being the management and maintenance of all the city properties and all the parks. Followed by childcare, recreation centers, and park events special use. You can see the whole breakdown there. And that's where the money goes. We do earn revenue. And so this is important. I wanted to bring this to everyone's attention. Through fees and services, through rec center memberships, through shelter rentals, through camps, through childcare, through athletics, all the different sources out there, you'll see that we have a target for next year of just under $14 million in earned revenue. And that $14 million then goes back and becomes part of our budget. So that's part of the $79 million through our earned revenues. Put that in context, though, this is where we have been for the past 23 years. And this really helps tell the story on how COVID has impacted our earned revenues. Just before COVID hit, we were peaking at just around $17 million per year in earned revenues. The first year COVID hit, we closed down in March and April. We lost the last quarter of that year. We were going to far exceed $17 million that year. You can see it really hurt us the following year. We took a big hit. We are still now recovering. While many other departments are kind of back to business as usual in terms of services, revenues. Yes, we're all being hit by inflation and have our staffing issues, but services are up to speed. Our revenues at the park system are still a couple of years lagging. We are anticipating ending this current year right around $14 million. But that's going to put us really at the same level as fiscal year 13. So COVID, in terms of earned revenues, really took us back quite a bit, and we're still catching up. And that is impacting our ability then to take that money and re-spend it on services, if that makes sense. We're also struggling with positions. As you know, I wanted to bring this to your attention. While the budget book will state that we have 875 FTEs, that's full-time equivalents. Two-thirds of our staffing is made of part-time positions. They are vital to the provision of our services. That's lifeguards, that's childcare, that's people at the front desk when you walk into the rec centers, that's fitness instructors, that's people running athletic tournaments. We depend on part-time positions, and we are still struggling in many areas of operation, attracting retaining enough part-time. Where are the major changes coming up for next year? The first one is the restructuring of our operational budget. For many, many, many years now, the dedicated Park and Recreation Special Revenue Fund, which is just for rec centers, has been funding non-rec center operations. Park operations, athletics, youth opportunities office, summer youth employment program, Lynn Haven Boat and Marina. All these areas of operation have been covered by the dedication. The plan moving forward is to right-size the budget, move those areas of operation to the general fund, thereby freeing up capacity in the special revenue fund for the rec centers. We have a number of small to modest fee increases across the board, which we do every year. You'll see that in the packet. Some of them haven't been increased in over five to eight years. One of note is the adult annual membership for a rec center is being proposed to go from $110 a year to 112 with no change to the youth. And then we have a variety of other fee adjustments across the system in terms of rentals and birthday parties and and new amenities coming online. We have our very first indoor pavilion getting ready to open this summer at Great Neck. That'll be a new area of operation and a new revenue driver for the department. Parks After Dark, which you're aware of, has already been approved by council. We have already filled three of the four positions. They are frantically getting things lined up to kick off in June. So that's already in the works, and that is included in the manager's fiscal year 24 budget in terms of being annualized and fully funding that program. And then the only other real new request we're asking for from the operational budget this year is funding in the in the amount of $250,000 to help fund and pay for the cleanup of the homeless encampments. And I don't need to go down this path. I think you're all aware of the issues that we're facing here, and some of these encampments are rather large, rather extensive. And the cleanup is not as simple as just sending in five or 10 staff and cleaning these areas up. They are buyer hazard sites. There's things in there that we would like to contract that work out, have an outside contractor clean the site up of all the personal belongings and waste. Then our staff can go in there and maintain the vegetation and spruce it up as needed. So that is also included in the manager's recommended budget. With that, I'll take any questions on the operating budget.
Actually, I will say my question for the CIP. They may be related, so let me just hold off.
Okay.
Thanks. First, thank you for this. Congratulations with all you do.
Thank you.
In the park. We're excited about the June Parks After Dark and and this new pavilion. What's going to happen in there?
So this has been in the works for a couple of years now. It's under construction as we speak. We had a very old dilapidated bathroom structure in the middle of Great Neck Park. I don't know if you remember that. It was rotten. So we ripped that out. On the same footprint, we're putting back in bathrooms for the public, but also an indoor reservable venue. So at Great Neck Park, you're familiar with the boardwalk that goes out to the Lynn Haven and the deck out there. We get weddings, we get events, and now people will be able to have their reception or parties or business functions inside that indoor venue year round. Birthday parties. And our staff at the rec center can use that indoor space as flex space. So now we can take classes, yoga classes, fitness classes, anything we need out of the rec center and free up more space for more programs because space is at a at a premium. So our staff can use it for programs during the week. On the weekends, it's going to be heavily rented for for private parties and businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschman, especially for the services you provide our citizens. Very important aspect, I think, of quality of life in our city. On the homeless encampment cleanup, are you sacrificing, I guess a lot of people will say yes, other quality parts of Parks and Rec? $250,000, can you, out of pot of money, or somewhere that that could come from, and then you could enhance something?
Get cleaned up. We basically asked the departments to absorb them. And what this would do will create a dedicated funding source. When we ask Parks and Rec to absorb it, it means they do less of something else. It's a sacrifice.
On the question of fees and and charges.
Yes.
Not recovering and so forth. Does there seem to be a particular area that that's from, or is it across the board?
So some areas are doing quite well. Unfortunately, those areas that are doing quite well are the smaller sections of the earned revenue bucket. For instance, athletics. Athletics are currently in the current fiscal year at 100% of their revenue target for the current fiscal year. We still have three months left to go. But athletics is a drop in the bucket when you compare it to rec centers and childcare. Rec centers and childcare are just the 80% of our budget comes from those two sources. Really where we're seeing one of the biggest impacts to revenue is on childcare. And the reason is, we just don't have the same number of children returning that we had pre-pandemic. We used to serve roughly 3,000 kids per week in our OST program. We're currently serving just over 2,000, I believe, at this point. And I'm going to look at Shannon to correct me. Sounds about right. I don't want to give you exact numbers. So we're down around a third. Now, you would say to yourself, well, then that means you're saving the money in terms of staff salaries because it's less kids. But we increased our rate of pay for staff at a level that the cost to run the program for 2,000 is just about the same as 3,000 because we increased our fees or we increased our rate of pay. But we don't have the same number of children coming back, if that makes sense. So that seems to be a large area where we're not the same as fiscal year 20, fiscal year 19. And rec centers is not back 100% to pre-pandemic levels yet, but it is on the upswing.
Certainly found out during the pandemic how important those after-school programs were for parents.
That's correct.
Particularly to be able to work. And I've got a feeling this is because maybe a lot of parents just left the workforce and are taking care of their kids at home instead of using their childcare.
I would tend to agree.
The workforce gets back to normal, then your numbers will go up. But for right now, that's probably it.
I would tend to agree with that as well. It'd be my best guess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Kirschman. And please allow me to serve as somebody who completely is appreciative and endorses every aspect of that after child or after-school childcare program. The folks who take care of our daughters are amazing, and and we do appreciate it very much and value the services. My question is also about the homeless encampment cleanup. And I'm wondering, I see, you know, there's there's things we do with the trash and the debris and the other hazardous materials. But I was interested in maybe a little bit of the the human element. How are we, if we are encountering people there who are in need of services? Are we winding that in with human services? And is there a budgetary impact there that we're creating by focusing on cleaning up these encampments?
Parks and Rec only does the cleanup. Whenever there is identification of a homeless encampment, Virginia Beach Police Department, in collaboration with our outreach workers and our Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation, they go out and they first try to find adequate housing and support services for the individuals experiencing homelessness. And then after they get them into those services, that's when Parks and Rec comes in to clean up. So there isn't necessarily an impact to what they do with this.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hey, Michael, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'm going to roll right into the the capital budget for Chad. I'm going to save him, but if we need him, he's here. Okay, so for the Parks and Recreation capital budget, the proposed budget's just over $16 million. It does include a couple of new projects, which I'm going to get into. All of the following projects and what we call program areas are are no change. And quite honestly, most of these areas have remained flat for for many, many years. There's been no change to the amount of annual funding they receive. You will see there's been some new ones added. For instance, the open space acquisition program, the two and a half million dollars per year was moved out of the park maintenance program and put into a new program on open space acquisition. So you'll see things like that listed. You'll also see programs such as the Alcree Boat Ramp that was funding through the state we received, as well as the Punggoh Ferry you'll see on the next slide. You will see one change, and that's the park infrastructure replacement, the underdeveloped park improvement program. Currently, that's at $1 million. That's slated to go to $4 million. So just for context, as I just mentioned, historically, that was at $2.5 million. The current year was dropped to a million. The $2.5 million went over to open space. So we lost kind of a million and a half decrease. Next year, we're getting that million and a half dollars back because it's going up to 4 million. Does that make sense? So if you average over three years, historically, we received $2.5 million per year. If you look at last year, this year, what's programmed for next year, it'll equal $7.5 million. Then the year after that, the $4 million stays, and we'll start receiving $1.5 million more per year the year after next. So I just want to give a little context and history to that. In the city manager's budget, we have increased the city bikeways and trails program up to a million. That's been historically funded at $475,000, which does not get you much when it comes to miles of trails. Chad, what is it for a mile of bikeway? $2 million a mile. So at at the current, what was the available funding we had was a quarter mile to do a year. And typically, what we had to do is we had to bank that money year after year to year after year to try to get a program, to try to get something on the ground, to try for good grant funding. The manager has recommended just rounding it up to a million, which will help us cover inflation and hopefully get some more miles of trail on the ground over time. We also had an assessment done on Little Island Fishing Pier. That needs some work. It's got some some structural issues, and to give it another 15 years of life, it's going to take about $1.2 million per the engineer's assessment. You'll also see the recreation center modernization. There's $10 million programmed out, but that's in the far out year. That's five years out. That is slated to hit in 2029. And as you know, we received 3/4 of a million dollars for the Virginia Beach Trail through through the feds. So that's really what I just talked about. Bikeways and trails getting up to $1 million, an increase of 525. We received the federal funding from the for the VB Trail. We are, of course, always applying for the federal grants to really get the first phase of that project up and built. There's the $1.2 million to do the necessary repairs at Little Island Fishing Pier. The recreation center modernization, $10 million. That hits five years out. And in conclusion, it's the same thing you just heard from LJ, same thing you heard from the schools. Surely, if you could click on that picture to the right, you're wondering what that is probably. The video is not playing, but that's that's a Great Neck Rec Center after it rains on the inside. So a lot of our rec centers, just like a lot of other infrastructure in the city, are really reaching some end-of-life issues in terms of their components, roofing systems, HVAC, mechanical, electrical. Our deferred maintenance continues to grow. So even with our available CIP funding, we cannot maintain our existing assets at their typical lifespans. We just can't replace them fast enough. We still are acquiring new land, which is amazing, for new and future parks and gap areas and areas where we have no parks in the city. But we do not have the funding yet available to add new things to the parks or to build new parks. So we've got a lot of great projects in the works, a lot of great things happening, but like all the other departments, we have our challenges. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Okay, Michael, and then Barbara.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschman, and I'm glad I waited because most of my questions and comments really do relate to the CIP. But before I ask those, let me just say that I really appreciate, I just want to echo the sentiments that have already been expressed here. I really appreciate the work that you and and your team do to provide these services and to promote quality of life. It's one of the distinguishing elements of our city. There are parks within close proximity to every home, to every neighborhood. And that a lot of credit goes to previous councils and to those who came before you and to you as well for maintaining those and for having the vision to establish those. We have a great park system and lots of open space. And and it's something really to be to celebrate in our city.
Yes.
Having said that, though, you, I think, clearly laid out a case for some of the challenges that we face. And I just want to express for the body and for the public, some of the ones that I'm concerned about. The park replacement and underdeveloped park schedule is something we need to keep a very close eye on. I think you could compare it to a balloon payment that is underway. So I'm happy to see the additional $4 million scheduled in the upcoming years. And I really just want to make sure that we all understand just how vital this schedule is and what it will mean for our neighborhoods if we're if we don't fund this program and accelerate even the replacement and modernization of existing playgrounds. I mean, these are really the life floods, the gathering places, the safe spaces within neighborhoods in communities. And we cannot afford to let them deteriorate. We cannot afford to let them become dangerous. And we cannot afford to shrink that inventory and create less places, less less safe spaces for Virginia Beach children and families. It's 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 of the utmost importance in my mind. The District Three that I represent contains many of these small parks, and people rely on them. And I just can't emphasize enough the importance of maintaining that $4 million funding and developing a plan. We need to be thinking about long term. I know we have lots of needs and lots of wants within this city. I can't think of, I can think of few that that take greater priority than neighborhood parks and playground equipment. So I just really want to make that point and drive that point home, which hopefully I have. I think you're doing great work on the trails program, and I know Walter Camp is here, and I want to compliment him and the team, but also you and your colleagues for your efforts to find alternative funding sources for those trails and bikeways. Although, you know, we need to look at all options. And so it's unfortunate that with budgetary constraints that we, you know, And so it's unfortunate that with budgetary constraints that we, you know, aren't able to fully fund trails, but that's the reality. And I applaud your ingenuity and innovative approach to these projects, to look for alternative funding sources, which are abundant. I mean, I've spent time talking to representatives from our federal legislators who tell us there's lots of funding available for trails and bike ways and those types of connectivity within communities, and we should pursue them aggressively, which I know you are.
Yes.
So I want to thank you for that. I do have one specific question about the Little Island Fishing Pier. Do you, not to put you on the spot, I could follow up on this later, but do you have a sense of what the revenue generated? I just looked up the fees for, for fishing. I mean, how, in other words, how does that ratio work between the maintenance for the pier relative to the income that it generates, or the revenue that it generates? And is there any room for directing that revenue for maintenance and operations? Or is it going to be self-supporting?
I guess I could answer a couple ways. One, I'd have to pull up the historical numbers. The first thing is we haven't collected revenue for the pier for the last two years. So that's just about the restart. We have come up with an automated system where you can pay to kiosk like the parking lots, again, due to staffing issues and having part timers after all the time. So that will restart now. Historically, though, in terms of the revenues from the fishing pier, that would drop to our revenue targets and then go back into our operating budget. And I guess you could say in a way offsets the operational cost of running Little Island Park in terms of our maintenance staff there. But in terms of enough money to cover the cost of the capital to repair the, to repair the bridge itself, or to even come close to covering the staffing cost to make, to manage that park, it would be inevitable. But I can get the numbers for you pre-COVID on what we made on the fishing pier access fees per year, and those are only seasonal as well. So it's only for a few months of the peak season.
And I guess it's on an honor system. But I, I just think it's a question worth asking, you know, if the city's going to be in the fishing pier business, is this, is something that could be, we could work toward a self-supporting system? If that's an amenity that the citizens and visitors enjoy and expect, is there a user fee that could support the ongoing maintenance of that? And I think we owe it to the taxpayers to explore that and have a better understanding of what that looks like. And then finally, and thank you for your indulgence, Mayor, my questions.
If, if I could just say, just for transparency, now, Little Island does produce quite a bit of revenue on the parking.
Yeah.
But the parking goes to public works, and that goes to beach replenishment. So there is another revenue source at Little Island that is significant.
Well, part of the reason I'm bringing up the point of Little Island is because the $1.2 million in improvements would, to your point, extend the life of about 15 years. But what happens after that?
Right.
And that's the question that, you know, maybe other people will have to decide and look at, but we could set them up for success with the decisions we make here and understanding what that's going to look like moving forward and whether or not another pier will, would be constructed and how it would be paid for. And those are all things we need to be thinking about now. 15 years isn't that far away. And I think that's to, to my other point, which is, I, I really am concerned about the, and, and Mr. Kirschman, you know, you and I talk a lot, and I bring a lot of things that have been generated by the community to you, and sometimes we're able to find accommodations like we have with VMX, which I'm looking forward to the conversation later this week. And sometimes we're not because of budgetary constraints and also fiscal and financial planning. But I, I do think, based on the experiences that I've had being responsive to community concerns, that we really need to think of a way to build some flexibility into the budget or into the strategic plan for Parks and Rec to be responsive to emergent community needs. Because, for example, we've heard from lots of folks with pickleball, and, and pickleball is the fastest growing sport in America. It's, it's emergent. It's very exciting, and we are underperforming in terms of both time and space that's available to pickleball players. And yet, I think everyone understands that's because we just don't have the resources to accelerate the construction, and there are other competing needs within the gyms. And so, but at the same time, this sport is exploding, and we're missing tourism opportunities as well as recreational opportunities for citizens and visitors. And also, there are parks, neighborhood parks within the community that makes a lot of sense to build a playground. And I, I just don't like the idea of that our response is that we can't afford it. And I understand that, and I think reasonable people in the community do as well, but what's the flexibility? What's the redirection? And, and I know, you know, probably you and your team would say, well, what are you going to cut in order to, to do that? And I, that's a fair question, but where, we need to find some balance, I think, moving forward to provide greater, if you want to call it flexibility, or just room to be responsive to those emergent concerns. And I hope that we can consider that moving forward. Having said all that, I think you do a great job. I think you brought us a really fantastic proposal, and I thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Barbara?
On the fishing pier, it was my question, too. I, I see it's characterized here as emergency action, so this is something that is a safety issue eminently to be concerned with?
No, we do not believe it's an imminent safety concern. The word, the terminology we heard was, Chad?
Something we need to, at moderate risk.
Moderate risk.
Thinking about building some.
Yeah. So I, nobody thinks we need to close it yet or rope it off and allow the public, but we don't want to get to that point. So the question is, do we plan to repair it now, or do we let it fade or demolish it or, or make sure it doesn't get?
I see that word emergency. I'm wondering if this is something that's real, real imminent. I know, and I, going back to your operating budget, you indicated that you've got a dedicated real estate tax that's four, $25 million. I, I think that came from the bond referendum in the eighties.
That's correct.
Okay, but was that designated for maintaining the rec centers? Or is it just designated to be to Parks and Rec?
I'll defer to the city attorney on that one.
That was related to when we had the bond referendum that approved the building of the rec centers?
Yeah, consummability. I, I think that's the one that's dedicated for the rec centers, and this is the one that we're proposing to take some of the general fund uses out that could create future capacity should council move in the direction of modernizing the rec centers in the out years.
Well, I was just wondering how many dedicated funding sources you have, because I know the open space program is a dedicated funding source from the meal tax, and this is a real estate. Are there other dedicated sources that you have that we're, we're looking at as a part of, of what you are?
We have very small slivers of dedicated funding. Other than the rec center dedication on the program and operation side, Frank has a couple slivers of dedicated funding for beautification, town center, tip as well, a little bit for the oceanfront maintenance. So very small slivers, but nothing as large and as grand as the rec center dedication.
Outdoor initiative.
The outdoor initiative.
Well, I, I think initially with the Sand Bridge SSD, some of the, maybe the income from the pier was supposed to go to that, but I don't believe it ever has. I think that we need to look at, at all of those things and make sure we're clear on, on what everything is, because when we try to cobble different things together, sometimes some things get in the way.
Yes.
Okay, I was just trying to remember what they all are. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thanks a bunch. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, at this time, Emily Archer will come and present Economic Development CIP for the fiscal year '24.
Hello, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Emily Archer with Economic Development, Project Manager. One second. So I'm here to present the Economic Tourism Capital Improvement Program. There's 34 total projects. We have 30 you're about to see without any changes. The first 14 in blue here are all of the Tourism Investment Program funded projects in our portfolio. As a reminder, the Tourism Investment Fund, also known as the TIP, comes from a taxes on restaurants, hotel rooms, and cigarettes and entertainment in the city. Its average revenue is around 40 million, and it's been around for about 30 years and has funded capital projects like the Convention Center replacement, the construction of the seawall, the Sports Center, and the Sandler Center. Of the 14 projects here includes several under construction, the Atlantic Park now under construction, as well as the oceanfront restrooms, which LJ briefly spoke about in his presentation. We have one with a balance of, balance to complete for 17th Street Phase One, which is from Pacific Avenue to Cypress Avenue. Non-TIP projects with no change moving on, shown here. 17th Street Phase Two, which is from Cypress Avenue to Birdneck Road with a balance to complete. There are two with partial federal or state funding, including London Bridge Commerce Center and Cape Henry Lighthouse Restoration. And moving on with non-TIP funding with projects of no change. These are ones that are programs that they get regular influx of funding every year. I would like to point out the different color coding here. So the Parking Enterprises Fund in dark blue is the Oceanfront Parking Capital Maintenance Fund. It's its own, generates its own funding with the fees that we charge to customers that park at the, at the resort. And then the two lighter blue ones down here are the Town Center Special Services District funded projects, the, that funds the garages and plaza capital maintenance, as well as the Town Center Reinvestment Fund. So moving on to the four projects we do have with modifications this year totaling about $21.9 million. I have a slide for each one. The major themes that you've been hearing over and over, inflationary environment we're in, the market volatility, workforce shortages, supply chain shortages. So for instance, 31st Street Canopy currently has a temporary canopy that's taken down or put back up every year. There's a, a fund, a CAP that was established to replace it with a permanent canopy. We were in a position to bid that last summer, but due to steel lead times at the time, it wasn't able to be accomplished within that tight window we have between October and April, so it's been postponed until next October, and it's currently being advertised for, the construction contract is currently being advertised. Burton Station, Improvements Three, this is actually the, kind of the next phase of Tolliver Road over the railroad tracks to Arrow Avenue. This will provide necessary infrastructure to support the Burton Station master plan implementation and more industrial development along Arrow Avenue. The increases needed for rising construction costs, material inflation, and scope changes related to stormwater requirements that have changed since the first phase of Tolliver Road went in. Lynn Haven Parkway Corridor Improvements, this is to provide better connectivity, safety, and aesthetic improvements along the corridor between 264 and La Shell Place to south of the mall. Increases needed for escalating construction costs, inflation, some additional signal work after recent field investigations. This has been around a while and has relied on dedications from property owners along the corridor, 19 of them to be exact. We're down to the final ones, and would really like to see this one come to fruition. And then the Virginia Beach Innovation Park, Phase Two projects, so this is the extension of Huedome Way further into the park and utilities, including a traffic signal on Princess Anne Road, installing a replacement pump station for the one that currently serves the Virginia National Golf Course and surrounding properties. And this is in order, in three new stormwater management facilities in order to make 68 or 60 acres available for development, of which is including a 400 square, 400,000 square foot advanced manufacturing facility, which is estimated to generate $38 million in capital investment and retain 500 jobs. And then lastly, projects with modifications is Winston-Salem Avenue Improvements. Projects to improve safety and pedestrian access between Pacific and Mediterranean Avenues. We actually bid this one last summer, and the lowest response of bidder, bidder came in $5 million over the appropriations we had, hence the increase you see before you today. Thank you.
Any questions? Barbara?
Yes, the, the Innovation Park Road, as I've asked questions other sessions about this because I'm still trying to quite get that right. This is an additional $12 million, 12.6 million. And Phase One had been 3.7 million. That was complete already. But then the additional, the original for this section was 6 million, but now it's increasing 12 and a half. So all of that together means that this half a mile of road has come up to over $20 million. Of course, that's road, but it's also drainage and stoplights and a pump station. That's, that's pretty expensive, and we still have the other end of this park that will be coming in off of Tournament Drive. That's not as, that doesn't access nearly as much property, but is that going to also require upgrade, or is that going to be served by what's there currently?
So, so as it stands, thank you for the question, Ms. Hindley. As it stands presently, I mean, going back to the beginning, and, and those of, those members of council that were with us before December will remember the reason that we're looking at this new road alignment to begin with is the, the existing plan for the Innovation Park would have been, would have required us at this point to clear cut about 40 acres of mature hardwood on the Princess Anne right of way. Obviously, we recognize that the, that the Princess Anne View Shed is something the community finds, finds great value in, and, and we just, quite frankly, don't want to do it. It would, if the, the lasting impact of taking down 40 acres of trees that are probably in, in an average age 40 to 50 years old, I would say, and some older, I said, I'm looking at Frank in the back of the room, and he's nodding at me, and, and, and I can tell you just, as your staff, it is our desire to preserve that hardwood stand to the extent that, that it's possible. So, so, so Ms. Hindley, to answer your question specifically, we would not anticipate coming up Tournament, using the existing road alignment, because that Tournament Drive expansion that runs north gets us, is basically intended to unlock that parcel and would take us into the, to, this goes back to City Manager Hanson, its plan to sort of, to, to clear cut, mitigate wetlands. As we've said to this body, that's not our intended plan in the present. And so by taking the, taking the, the road sort of further, I guess it would be west, then, then we're able to, to preserve those hardwoods. To the other point that you mentioned, yes, ma'am, the, it's important to note that the existing, if, if Public Utilities was here, I would, I would call Don Pyron or, or Bob Montague up at this point, that the existing pump station that's serving this part of the city was only ever intended to be temporary. And so there is a less expensive means of delivering the, the, the infrastructure for, for sewer. However, in, in consultation with Public Utilities, it became very clear that the long-term maintenance would ultimately cost us much more, because we would have to install lift stations and, and additional infrastructure, all that would require maintenance that would then run the cost up. And so where, yes, this, the, the sewer utilities infrastructure does cost more in this plan over the life of the infrastructure, which has been our practice, and it's important to note, we save considerable amounts of money. The other, the other expense is generally, we wanted to ensure that we were meeting your new stormwater, in this part of the city in particular, ensure that we're meeting the new stormwater standard, and, and there is a considerable increase in the anticipated cost associated with meeting the new standard.
You know, and going back to the very beginning of this biomedical, I certainly did bring that whole file today, but this is what the rezoning was on in 2016. I mean, I never see a plan to remove those hardwood trees. They're always still there. And this, and I guess this is the 2016 agenda, it shows a road going all the way through, and, but now Huedome is going to just go to this last property from that direction. And I'm thinking what I'm seeing here on this, this map or drawing is showing a Tournament Drive coming in from the other direction, serve those, those properties from the other direction. So I don't see this initial road going all the way through the way it was originally planned, but I see Huedome stopping at one end and then Tournament Drive coming in the other.
Yes, ma'am. And again, what I'll say about Tournament Drive is recognizing the weight of industrial traffic and the, and the trucks, we don't know that it's appropriate to put industrial traffic at two points on Princess Anne Road without a signal at both of them. So we, we think that that, we don't anticipate that that, that we would, that we would improve the Tournament Drive section to carry the industrial traffic that we're anticipating on Huedome Way.
I hope we have.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Emily.
I would like to add that we are still pushing for a pedestrian trail connection between the two, so pedestrians and cyclists could still connect between Huedome Way and Tournament Drive as originally envisioned.
It didn't turn into anything like it was originally planned, but I think in last week's presentation, maybe it was with the roads, there was some comment about this being twelve and a half million and how it was going to be funded. I mean, this is a penny and a half on the real estate tax, um, and this is a new project. So, but you, I think you said something last week about it being with bonds so that it's not a...
Yes. Yes, ma'am. We anticipate that we would use public facility revenue bonds for this and, and, and the reason we're bringing this forward at this point, we recognize it's a considerable increase, but yes, there's, there's, it's really two phases. One, the expansion of, of architectural graphics, which commonly known as AGI, that we've been working on with Jimmy Rayner for some time. So by the, they'll be constructing four hundred thousand square feet of new manufacturing space on, on one of these parcels. That helps us keep, uh, at minimum four hundred families that are spread throughout all of the districts in the city here in our community. Because if we're not able to locate this, then, then we know as we've been working with them for some time that this project would go to one of the other communities where they operate, uh, in likely either Georgia or Tennessee. And so one, it was important that we keep those families here, but also it's important to know that what's, what's in this space today, um, is generally being leased from Steel. Steel is planning to grow into that space as soon as, uh, AGI moves out of it. And so again, that allows us to continue ensuring that we, uh, that, that Steel grows here, whereas most, some of you will remember, it wasn't that long ago, just, just a few months ago, that Steel was looking at an expansion outside of Virginia Beach and specifically outside of the Commonwealth. And thank you, thanks to your leadership, we've ensured that that, that that expansion happened here. But the space that AGI is moving out of creates the additional space that Steel needs to continue their expansion here.
This isn't going to be built all at one time, is that correct? It's going to be built in phases over...
So at one point, we were thinking that it might be in one hundred thousand square foot phases, but I believe the current plan is either two, I believe it's two, two hundred thousand square foot phases, that were, one immediately following the other. It's just this, the speed at which they need this, they need the additional capacity. They anticipate that they can get into the first two hundred thousand while they're building the second two hundred.
If it needs to take several years, that property, and, and this was noted, and we have noted too, that it needs to be continually drained because if it's, if it doesn't, then it will revert to non-title wetlands and then you, it'd be trouble. And I think the farming has been canceled, that contract, so it's not going to be maintained. So it, it's going to have to be maintained or it will revert.
Yes, ma'am. We agree and, and we do, and, and our understanding is the team at AGI is ready to break ground as, as soon as we have some certainty on, on, on access to the parcel.
Hey, Amelia?
Just wanted to ask about that Tolliver?
Yes, ma'am.
Road away, is it way or road?
It's road.
It's Tolliver Road, yes, ma'am.
I saw Tolliver Way. Okay. Um, as I go down that road, it ends up going into a cul-de-sac. So you're explaining about extending it to Arrow Avenue. Talk to me about that.
Yes, ma'am. So that, the reason we put the cul-de-sac there was just, um, recognizing that we didn't have an appropriation when we built the first phase of, of Tolliver Road extended to go all the way. We pulled a cul-de-sac so that traffic could easily get around. It has, it had always been our plan to carry the road on when additional funding became available, and that's what we're asking for here. So where you see the cul-de-sac now, we'll just carry on.
Yeah, because I remember, you know, about going, then I go down and, so it's just a temporary.
Yes.
Until you're able to open and move.
That's right. And, and of course, this is a, this is a really important part of our plan to, to, to provide much-needed service throughout Burton Station. And so we're grateful for your, your consideration of the item.
Down there all the time?
Yes, ma'am.
Work?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Adams. The expansion of this, of Tolliver, doesn't that open up more land for industrial development around that park?
Yes, sir, it does. And we, and so important to know, when you think about your Tolliver plan and specifically slayed out today, I sort of think of the, the railroad tracks as the buyer, that's maybe, but, but on the north end of the railroad track, we, we anticipate it more industrial development on this, on the, below the tracks, we anticipate that that's ripe for continued residential development throughout the community. And so yes, sir, the extension of this road enables both uses.
Anybody else press?
Uh, Mr. Adams, um, could you give us a little information on this Winston-Salem Avenue Improvement Modification? And just some backstory on, uh, we had a budget, but it looks, it appears the lowest bidder was five million. Can you just give us some understanding?
Yes, sir. And I may pull Emily back in for this one. I can tell you, this is one that we've been working on, Vice Mayor, in particular, you know, this is something we've been working on for a long time. And, uh, and it, these are much-needed community improvements for all of the residents throughout this quarter, more particularly on the bike and pedestrian side. And I think, and we make one or two runs at this prior and we couldn't get a bid that came in. And so this is additional funding to, uh, to, to, uh, to, we hope, deliver this once and for all, as it's, it's a longstanding commitment that the community's been waiting on. And so...
Delayed.
Yes, ma'am, it has been. And so this, this goes, uh, Councilmember, this one goes back to even before my time in economic development. So I mean, this has got to be, I'm looking around the room at everybody, this one's got to be six or seven years old that we've been trying to find a way to get this funded. It's ever, the staff in the room are nodding at me. So yes, so we've been trying to find a way to fund this project for six or seven years. The community's been asking for it, and so that's, that's, that's the reason it's coming forward.
The reason I ask is, uh, Councilmember Schulman was on TV last night, uh, discussing Phase Four over at Shore Drive, and I know this is under economic development, that was more so public works, but I think that one's over fifteen years in the making. And so what is the economic impact of this Winston-Salem five million plus up as it relates to, um, you know, doing something else? And I, and again, I know this has been going on for a while, just trying to get some understanding for those on Shore Drive that are, uh...
Uh, I understand. And so, and so this is where, um, I'm going to answer the first half of this and, and step away and I, and let Emily take it over because, uh, I, this, it's always important that, that when, when I am personally conflicted out of an item, that I call it out. And so as, as, as a Shore Drive resident for the last eight years, I'm going to step out of the way and let Emily handle the, the, uh, the Shore Drive Phase Four. But as it relates to direct economic impact on, on, on this quarter, I don't know that we have that at the staff level, other than this has just been, and like, much like the Shore Drive project, something that was committed to the community, that, 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 uh, that we're trying to advance in this point. I'm, uh, I don't know that there's anything else to add on that one, other than, uh, than just to say I, I don't have the economic impact here.
Okay.
But isn't it further along in the process? I mean, there...
So you, we do have shovel ready drawings on this one.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty far along in the process. Like I said, we advertised it for construction. We just, we didn't, the, the construction bids that came in were well above the funding we had available. So it's ready, it's shovel ready.
I will say when John Earn went off council, one of the last things he said to me is, "Make sure we get this road project done." That was one of the last things, and that was quite a while ago.
It was fair to say that if there's enough, uh, demand, enough support in the community, even if we get bids that are well outside of where we expect it, we can't get a project done.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, Work, did you have something?
Yes, uh, just one last question, Mr. Adams. As I was saying, on Innovation Park, I missed here, but spending twelve point nine, what's twelve point six million dollars for infrastructure, I think that also opens up sixty acres of land, which we would be paid for once, by whoever uses it, so we would get a return on that investment.
Yes, sir.
Plus jobs and business.
Yes, sir. That, that is, that is the, that has always been our model in your corporate parks. Yes, sir.
Okay. Barbara?
Well, that's a question that I had made a note to myself to ask. I would like to know, citywide, what properties are owned by the Development Authority? And what are the city's responsibilities to those properties? Because I get confused, you know, from every now and then I see when some, something is reported, well, that's owned by the Development Authority. And I know that there are different, I think there are different responsibilities. I think it's things have changed over the years because it used to be the Development Authority's constructed the streets and so forth in the park, but they don't do that anymore, obviously. But, so now what's owned by, in the city by the Development Authority? And what are the city's responsibilities to those properties?
Ms. Henley, we have that map. We'd be happy to, uh, we, um, we could either, that's something that we could either put in your Friday packet or we could come back and present, present to this body at a, at a later time, whatever, whatever is your convenience.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, anyone else? Hey, thanks a bunch.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Kathy Warren, interim Planning Director and Deputy Director in Economic Development will provide the Economic Development Operating Budget for fiscal year twenty-four.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I am going to start today to provide to you the Department of Economic Development's proposed FY twenty-four budget. Here you'll see our organization summary, thirty-four FTEs. This should say five divisions for economic development and a sixteen million dollar annual budget. Our programmatic budget is as follows. Thirty-nine percent of the budget is for the Parking Management Office. Thirty-four percent of the budget is for general operations. That includes our business, uh, attraction team, project delivery and admin staff. Three percent of the budget goes to our Growth Smart Program. Twenty-three percent is from the Special Services District, and then one percent is for the Proposed Hive Program. This slide shows a further breakdown of the budget by division, uh, with only one proposed new FTE as part of our budget this year, and that again is part of the new, uh, an expanded hive program. For major changes and initiatives, again, the Hive Business Program, this is an item that is included on your potential reduction list. We are adding increased training and workforce development opportunities and creating an innovative entrepreneurial ecosystem that is directly tied to the city's strategic plan of growing economic opportunity. This includes building opportunities for small women and minority-owned businesses, and an office assistant, that's the FTE I noted, is added to focus on maintaining a consistent presence at the front desk and helping to manage and run the facility. In addition, uh, we're adding a Town Center Project Coordinator. This is just a position reclassification, and this person will be responsible for all things Town Center, overseeing our contracts and, uh, providing assistance with the SSD budget and future projections. The Town Center Special Services District has been moved into the Economic Development Budget, and this is coming from the Special Financing District Section of the budget. This will just help us to more accurately reflect how this fund is managed, since it runs through our office already. And then for initiatives underway and our conclusion, offshore wind industry, we continue to focus on building the supply chain, workforce training, and helping to ensure that appropriate sites for infrastructure are available for Virginia Beach's shores to the grid. And happy to report that in FY twenty-three, it's anticipated that our Economic Development Investment Program grants of four point seven million dollars this year will incentivize capital investment of over four hundred and eighty-six million, with four hundred and twenty-three jobs retained and just under thirteen hundred new jobs created. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? Barbara?
I'm sorry, I seem to have my hand up first all the time. Didn't we have a report a couple of months ago that our EDID money was utilized for the year? And so I'm wondering if it's sufficient to get us through the year?
Yes, ma'am, you did.
The answer, ma'am.
Um, the, the, yes, ma'am, we're, we're so fortunate. So, uh, backing up three years, one of the things that, that came to us from, uh, from the Development Authority Liaison, specifically at that, at that time, Mr. Jones, but also our Vice Mayor, as well as for many of you, is that, yeah, uh, starting in really two thousand nineteen coming forward, that, that you were, that there was a desire for us to, um, participate, one, in larger deals, but two, to under, um, to ensure that the deals that we were advancing for investment truly were moving the needle on not just capital investment, but also on the value of jobs in the community. You all gave us that encouragement. The Development Authority accepted that. And so, yes, ma'am, we've been building capacity over the past three years to, to invest, so that, so that we can invest in larger events. That has come home to bear, as you just saw on the slide that Kathy showed you, where we've, we've done a little over four hundred million dollars worth of deals in the last eighteen months, give or take. And so, and so as a result, the investments that we, that have been required to do that, most often to match the Governor's Commonwealth Opportunity Fund or VJ or things, have, um, have, have brought that balance down considerably. And so, so we have, uh, um, we, we are looking, we have some capacity remaining, but we are looking, we are very much looking forward to the appropriation for next year so that we can reengage in this activity.
Don't we use a cigarette tax as our funding source for that?
Yes, ma'am, you do.
People not smoking as much, that's probably declined, so is that enough for your source now?
So, so we're okay for now. And so, so yes, ma'am, I guess on the public servant side of me is happy that, that fewer people are, are smoking. The, uh, the, your, as your economic developer, it certainly gives me less resources to work with. And so, um, but, but, but that said, yes, ma'am, that, that amount is still, uh, in the neighborhood of two point two million dollars year over year. And that is, particularly with some of the real, as we just talked about, some of the real estate challenges that we're working through, um, I think adequate for the time being, but if, if the trend continues, I think Kevin has me projected to be below one and a half million within five years. And so, again, great on the public health side, but, but it does create some, uh, it does create the need for some conversation in the future potentially.
I was just wondering if that was enough of the source for you. Only other thing here on the same page, the offshore wind, you know, that...
Yes, ma'am.
Sticky topic right now with the oven grid, and I didn't bring that, this is to me, with me today, that we got from them in our packet, that eight-page account, which I have some disagreement with.
Yes, ma'am.
All the times that they said that they reported at my forum, uh, just being present doesn't count, I don't think. But anyway, um, I'm, I'm very good with the Dominion Energy. They've been very helpful because all of these things go right through the district too. So I've been probably more involved than most of the rest of you. But this oven grid, um, like I said, for two years I was told they're not viable, it's not going to happen, and now they're suddenly on the front burner. And so I'm kind of confused about everything, but I guess we will be having our public meeting on that October fourth.
May fourth, yes, ma'am.
And, um, I, I'm getting a lot of questions about that, and things just don't fit from what I've been hearing in the past and what I'm seeing and hearing now, and I'm very concerned. But, um, appropriate sites for infrastructure, of course, the whole key to the oven grid is if Virginia Beach is going to give that land to that San Ridge.
Yes, ma'am, that's accurate. And it's important for me to note, everything that we're talking about here is, is specific to the Dominion project that is already permitted. And so that, that, uh, thank you for that question. That's, that's, that is absolutely the right question. And so, uh, Dominion, as you, uh, referencing the briefing they gave you all just a few weeks ago, is a bit further ahead and are heading towards construction. So the work that we are doing in this space, and specifically, um, the workforce training, um, item that, that is mentioned here, that's, that's the training lab that you all used, basically pandemic relief funds to, to enable at Tidewater Community College, so that we had, so that we had the, the training equipment needed. The mayor was kind enough to come and cut the ribbon on that facility just a couple of weeks ago, but that is, but that is really built around the Dominion standard and what we will need to deliver the workforce requirements, the ongoing care and maintenance of their facility once built. Uh, but, but yes, ma'am, so everything that we are working right now in that space is specific to Dominion.
So we're clear with that later? Thank you.
Worth, and then Amelia.
So, Mr. Adams, wouldn't it also be, uh, Dominion's not the only offshore wind project on the East Coast or other, and so that buildings, the supply chain could also apply to other offshore wind projects up and down the East Coast?
Yes, sir, that's absolutely right. We anticipate that there, there are potentially ten sites off the East Coast of the United States utilizing the shallow water of the Continental Shelf that have sufficient, sufficient wind volume for this work. And so really what you see happening, not just here in Virginia Beach, but at the regional level, is what we hope is the... but at the regional level, is what we hope is the establishment of a hub right in the center of the East Coast of the United States that can deliver this industry.
Mayor?
Can we go back where you had about the special services district? The next page before initiative, I don't have it. Right after this, did you have another?
I don't believe so. Just this with the final bullet, with the Town Center Special Services District moving into the economic development budget? Is that the one?
Yeah, because I've had, you know, meetings, I'm sure you heard.
Yes.
With the residents in there about the special service. And this may be helpful, having somebody, you know, manage this because there's a lot of concerns. And we had a very civil meeting, but I think they will be pleased to know that there is going to be somebody who will manage it.
I agree. And I actually have to thank Kevin Shadley and his staff because they were the ones who recommended this for this budget year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thanks again for your outstanding work. Appreciate it.
And Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, Kathy Warren's going to stay right where she is. And she is the interim director of planning. She's going to give you the planning and community development operating budget for fiscal year 24.
Multiple hats. I mean, I'm not.
Okay, so on to presenting the planning and community development proposed budget for FY24. Here we have 143 FTEs with five divisions and an annual budget of $14 million. Broken down by division, 36% in permits and inspections, 14% in the director's office, 22% in the Development Services Center, 14% in zoning, and 14% in our planning administration division. The department's budget is broken down by each division here. And the only real piece to point out to you here is the one additional FTE that has been created for the right-of-way office in FY24. For major changes and initiatives, implementation of revised stormwater management regulations. As you well know, City Council approved changes to the regulations and ordinances in March of '22. Staff continues to implement these changes and refine requirements to maintain resiliency while streamlining review of development plans. Based on discussion at City Council's retreat this past year, we do anticipate further discussion from you regarding how you'd like to move forward. For short-term rental enforcement, we will continue to be, this will continue to be a high priority for this year. And we are working to transition from a reactive model to a more proactive model. Enforcement will prioritize STRs with active complaints, followed by those that have not submitted applications for their permit. The establishment of a right-of-way office. This item is listed on your potential reductions list. One right-of-way coordinator, and that's the FTE that I pointed out on the previous slide. This position has been approved to start the consolidation process with Public Works and Planning Department staff working with right-of-way issues and to ensure consistency. Initiatives underway and our conclusion, IT Planning Federated Model has met its one-year anniversary. The collaboration between planning and IT staff to troubleshoot hardware solutions and provide custom programming. It's in its first year. And the planning tech team has improved business process workflows and reporting capabilities, which has resulted in much improved customer service delivery. For our permits and fees in FY23, City Council approved several permits and fees to be increased to assist in covering our programmatic costs. No changes are anticipated in revenue projections for FY24. For staffing, we are very happy to report that although we are still having some challenges hiring staff, we have been able to fill 40% of our vacant positions as of today. And then for our comprehensive plan, we, preliminary work on the comprehensive plan, it's well underway. We have engaged the services of a consultant to help lead the process so that we can ensure a timely delivery for our comprehensive plan. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions, Rose, Mary, and then Barbara.
I got it. I have a very busy department. You're wearing a lot of hats these days and working hard. Everywhere I go, the people tell me what a great job you're doing. I do have a question. I've heard it from more than one person. When they've gone down to planning on certain days, there's no one there to serve them. There's no window open and people have been a little bit upset about it. Is there?
So the front counter is open every day. On two of the days, you are asked to make an appointment just so we can make sure the right staff is available. But it's open every day for drop-offs, plan reviews. Anything you need, we can provide it. And I'm also happy to talk to you after, if you'd like me to contact someone, happy to talk to them.
And Barbara?
Would you address a little bit how the comprehensive plan is going to be done? I guess it's always been done by the comprehensive planner and the staff, but I guess we don't have one now, so we're using a consultant. And who is the consultant? And how are they going to work? And I hope it gets underway quickly because we're already behind and we keep doing things that are maybe going to violate the comprehensive plan.
Absolutely. So I'm sure you're aware that 2016 was our last update to the plan. So we're a little bit behind on completing that. COVID was one of our issues, not being able to undertake the public engagement that we need to. We have been short-staffed, as you're well aware. We do have a comprehensive plan coordinator now. However, we believe there's not enough support staff there in order to get this done in an efficient manner. So we have contracted with Renaissance through Dills Architects. And they are well-known in the industry, have worked with many cities on their comprehensive plans. And so, we have received a scope from them. We are currently going through that. And we're hoping to get them under contract here very soon and get moving. Well, I'd say we're getting ready to start our public engagement late spring.
Okay, Michael, and then Worth.
Thank you. To follow up on the discussion about the comprehensive plan, I think that would be a really interesting separate briefing just for the manager to just share with everyone, especially in the new members, exactly how we use the comprehensive plan, how it will be updated, and what ours is, or some version of that. And if that will be okay, I would like to request that briefing. And also, I would also like to request that every member of council receives a paper copy of the current comprehensive plan, if you don't mind. I don't know, how many pages is it? Hundreds? Okay.
We can get you a copy. That's no problem.
Yeah, and here's why. The comprehensive plan has been updated. And I want to make sure everyone, everyone has a copy of the most current, up-to-date comprehensive plan that we're using now.
Happy to do it.
Okay, Worth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you this morning for all the work that you're doing on several departments. On short-term rentals, two questions. Number one, is there adequate staff now to address concerns of citizens and the operators of STRs? Do we have enough? Are we responding quickly?
I do believe so. I've got our zoning administrator here. She's shaking her head, yes, of course, we'd love to have more staff. But yes, we can absolutely respond to the market.
Thank you. And then the second is, are we collecting enough money from those operators in order to, for us, to pay our bills and pay staff adequately so we're not being charged?
I believe so. But if you would let me follow up with you on that, I'd like to look at the numbers and get the specifics to you.
Thank you. Barbara?
Another question on short-term rentals. If someone has a complaint, what is the process now to make the complaint? I always thought it was the 3-1-1, but I find out now that that's not what we're using. So if someone has a complaint, how do they file it?
I'm going to ask Hannah Sabo to come down briefly since she is in charge of the short-term rental process so that we can make sure we're giving you the right information. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon, council. If somebody has a complaint about a short-term rental, they can call the short-term rental hotline. They could also call 3-1-1. Either way, it gets to our short-term rental team where we would investigate to see, you know, are they an active short-term rental? Do we have them in our system already? Are we, and do we have them as, do they have a permit with us? Do we know that they're operating already? Are they in the process of going through the violations? I'm kind of gathering that history on the property and then responding to the property, reaching out, see if we can speak with them and bring them into compliance. And if not, of course, moving through that.
How do they access the hotline?
The, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but it's on the city website under short-term rental. There's a specific hotline. Yes, absolutely. It's also on all of the, those big signs that say, short, this is a short-term rental, it's also on that. But yes, we can get that to you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, one quick question. How are we doing on, you know, the engineers that do this? That may understand, are you short on engineers? And especially with the new regs that are out there, you know, the capacity of, or the expertise of the engineers required?
So for the Development Services Center, yes, we are short engineers. And we are hard, that's one of the, that's one of the positions we're having the most difficulty being able to fill. So, and I know we've talked to Public Works about this position as well. They're having difficulties filling that. So we're trying to do some innovative things, creative things, to get the word out and see if we can entice more engineers to apply for the positions.
Is it temporary fix, perhaps outsourcing? Or is that in the realm of possibility?
Outsourcing is, A, it's a lot more expensive than what's budgeted, but also on the contractor side. If we would give them an outsourcing option for them to get up to speed with our regulations, it'll be a cost that is exorbitant for them. But we are looking into it to try to figure out if that's an option from a cost standpoint. It'll be a very expensive burden to put forward on people who are requesting permit applications.
I know, you know, it is a dilemma. Okay. Hey, thanks a bunch, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council at this time, Cynthia Spanoulis, our Director of Aquariums, will come and present the fiscal year 24 proposed budget for the Aquariums Department.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, members of council. I'm excited to be here today to share our operating budget. I know it's been a long day of presentations. So I thought, as our mission is to inspire you about conservation of the marine environment, I thought I would bring two of our ambassador animals here today to share with you. So we have a moon jelly. Chris Plant over here has our moon jelly. That will be featured in the South Building. And then Chris Equals has Godzilla, who is a pre-hensel-tail skink who lives in the Solomon Islands just above Australia. So you would never see this animal unless you were in the Solomon Islands. So I want you to enjoy these animals. So while you enjoy the animals, I want to introduce our two officers that have joined me here today. Your partner, the Virginia Aquarium Foundation. We have our chair, Sal DeBarro. And we have Officer Carolyn Robertson here, joining me for the presentation. Animals are always popular. I'm looking up at Eileen. She hates to follow me. I know, I know. All right, so I'll briefly run through our operating budget for you. As you can see here on our operating budget, we mainly receive our earned revenues. So we are actually earning most of our revenues here, about $12 million. And we receive those monies from our admissions, membership, parking. And of course, we'll talk in a minute about the contribution that the Aquarium Foundation gives every year to support the operations of the aquarium. And then we receive a small amount, $3 million, from the general fund, as you can see here, for our total operating budget of just over $16 million. Of course, as you know, our economic impact for the city yields much greater than this amount. We're at $265 million each year of economic impact contributing to the city of Virginia Beach and the Commonwealth of Virginia. Also not reflected in these numbers is the $2 million a year that we earn in admissions tax that goes to the city of Virginia Beach, not inside of our budget. So a few highlights here on the pie chart. You can see our various sections with general administration, guest experience, and animal care leading the way for expenditures. And you can see here the $1 million a year that comes in and operating support each year from the Aquarium Foundation. You can see here our operating expenditures. And we were excited to see in the city manager's budget on the first line item, a slight increase in our marketing. This would allow us to reach outside of the Hampton Roads market into the Richmond and the Washington DC markets. You'll see a slight increase in our gift store capabilities. Last year, we earned about $2.7 million in revenues from the gift store. So we're able to enhance that area so that we can increase those revenues that we are earning. We also hope to increase our science education section. And then you'll see some general increases due to inflation as well as increases in expenditures due to the increase in cost of contracted manpower. So as you can see on this slide, as I mentioned earlier, we're earning $12 million through admissions, membership, parking fees, and the Aquarium Foundation's contribution. And of course, we hope that our admissions and our memberships will increase when the South Building opens. So we've actually adjusted these upwards. So on this slide, you'll actually see some of those items I mentioned earlier. We were excited to see in the city manager's budget, and we hope that it remains, that expansion of the digital marketing. So right now, we only market inside of the Hampton Roads region. And we know that as people plan a vacation and they're outside of the area, they're trying to plan their vacation in advance. With our time ticketing model, it's important for them to be able to buy their tickets in advance before they arrive in Virginia Beach. So this line item, which is about $163,000, would help us to attract those visitors prior to arriving in Hampton Roads in Virginia Beach. The second line item is close to all of our hearts. I know it's close to your heart. Each year, we have about 600 volunteers that work on a regular basis at the Virginia Aquarium. And they contribute about 40,000 hours each year to help us achieve our mission. And we would love to provide each one of them with a uniform shirt. In the past, we asked our volunteers to buy their own shirt. And I think that it would be wonderful if we could, as a city, purchase these shirts for our wonderful volunteers. In addition to this line item, we also have professional development. Over the last few years, we've actually cut that budget dramatically. And in fact, we do not budget anything for professional development on our city line item. And we have veterinarians, animal technicians, and other professionals that need to be licensed and have continuing education. So this would help retain a lot of our employees as well as enhance their skill set. And that's about $71,000 for the uniforms as well as professional development. And then the final line item is additional monies, about $150,000, that would really enhance one-time our guest experience. It would provide a booth in our parking lot so we could assist our visitors as they park and pay. It would enhance our lobby as members try to check in. It would help us with a members' desk. And it would update our lighting and our sound system throughout the aquarium. So some of the initiatives that we have underway. We're currently updating our economic impact analysis. As you recall, we did this a few years ago. I referenced it a few minutes ago. We have retained the Sage Policy Group out of Maryland. And they are working We have retained the Sage Policy Group out of Maryland, and they are working with the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission Economist Greg Gruetendorf to update our numbers. So we'll hope to be back to council sometime probably in September when we update that. We've also updated our strategic plan, and I know I was here in January to share with you some of the exciting things that we have planned over the next 10 years. Our major expansion and renovation of the main building, and of course, actualizing the vision for the resort area Strategic Action Plan, which is, has the aquarium on the cover. And finally, we've paused the foundation funding, fundraising capability study until we're ready to move forward with Phase One of our expansion renovation plans that are in the CIP. So I would like to pause for a moment and take questions, but I'd also like to express my gratitude to each of you for your visits and your engagement with the aquarium.
Hey, Rosemary.
Cynthia, you really know how to give a budget. Thank you. We really appreciate you, appreciate you and all the volunteers. Dang it, those volunteers, they deserve a free shirt.
They do, they do.
When is the South Building going to open?
Oh, great question. So let's see, I'm three memorial days behind due to COVID and supply chain challenges. We're hoping early July, hoping early July, but you certainly all will be at that grand opening. We'll make sure you all get an invitation for the ribbon cutting.
You've always got so many innovative ideas for programming.
Oh, well, thank you.
And I, I know my granddaughter is going to be going to summer camp, which their family paid for, nothing's free here, and they're really excited about it.
We're excited to see her, too.
Okay, we had a quick.
Cynthia, thank you so much for bringing the guests today. Took a selfie and sent it to my kids, so thank you. I wanted to highlight, it's good to see that your parking fees, although I know some locals don't like it, but that increased year over year. So I know with the parking at the oceanfront and some of those challenges. When we, we all had initial discussions with the city manager and budget, and we discovered, to some surprise, that the request that you had had been bumped out for the CIP. Can you just give the public an idea of, you know, that impact for you?
Sure. Excellent question, and I know the board members and I are excited but anxious about leveraging the city's commitment with private sector support, because we really want to maximize that private sector support for the city. And of course, as you all know, after many, many years of planning, about 20, we've retained the long-term lease on the Camp Pendleton property. So this year, we were really excited to see that the $3.7 million for the design of the parking structure and the Gateway Bridge appeared in the CIP. However, we are slightly concerned because the delay of the year 2029 really puts us into some serious challenges from not only a fundraising perspective, but the viability in the long-term structures at the aquarium. So, you know, first, I want to maximize that private sector support for you all, and we know that going out and speaking with donors, the first question they ask is, is the city committed? And unfortunately, at this point in time, I have to say in 2029, and so the second thing they say to me is, well, in 2028, come on back and talk to me. So that really delays the project. And then we know in Hampton Roads, there's a big change in the landscape of donors. We know that some of our key donors, as Hampton Roads changes, some of those key donors that we have now that can give seven to eight figures may not be here in 28, 2028 or 2029. So we really would love to get some commitments from them sooner rather than later. And second, if you come by the aquarium right now, you'll notice that the seal tank is down once again. It was down all summer, last summer, now it's down again. We continue to experience challenges with these aging infrastructure. I know I sat through, it seems to be the theme of all of our budget presentations, but the seal tank, the turtle tank, and of course, the shark tank are all at end of life now. And so if you looked at the plan that we presented to you in January, it was going to be 10 years until we got to those to do the construction based on how we phased it. And so now we're about 15 years out till we actually get to those. And so you're risking the health and the vitality of those animals, you know, a potential closure of the aquarium. And I know these things are scary, but we need to start planning now so that we don't reach that, that point in the, in the stage of where those exhibits and animals are. So excellent question.
You also mentioned the expansion of the RAC Commission's Resort Strategic Growth Area to include the aquarium.
It's on the cover, yeah.
On the cover, it happened in 2008. And then we've had some conversations most, more recently about the 2020 adopted RASAP. And I, in order to prepare for this briefing, I read through it, and I was surprised at how many times the aquarium was mentioned. And so you're definitely an economic driver, but, you know, total public engagement for the RASAP was almost 3,000 people, page 14. Page 16 is very important because it actually describes how the tip fund came about and the merging of the two funds, primarily the major, major projects fund. So for the public, that major projects fund was established in 2001, 2002, to provide funding for construction and debt costs surrounding. One of the areas was the parking lot expansion for, for your, for the Virginia Aquarium and Science Museum. It's listed on page 46, because you talk about the importance of public-private partnerships and the commitment from the city. The Virginia Aquarium Expansion Opportunity on page 46 is listed, number one. It's not in any order, but you're listed one. 49, you have an entire page in this RASAP plan committed to the aquarium. And I want to read, because it's really impressive. The Virginia Aquarium and Marine Science Center is the most visited cultural attraction in the Commonwealth of Virginia, with approximately 700,000 visitors each year. I'm, I'm sure some of them are staying in hotels and staying around for some tourist activities. But this was an important component. Survey respondents and public workshop attendees overwhelmingly supported the Virginia Aquarium and Marine Science Center's expansion plans. And then it also fell into page 52 within their implementation plans, which is important because we recently received a memo about another item that was on the implementation related to public art. And I have to imagine that, you know, this project in Phase One would have a significant impact. But page 52 says that one of the priority action items for the RASAP is to support impactful projects that benefit the resort area and the City of Virginia Beach, and you all are listed. And so I think that through the RASAP and the hard work that the Resort Advisory Commission does, that it's clear that you're in the plan, you're in the updated plan, there's been public input, over 3,000 people, the fund is there, you bring in the people, and more importantly, we support, as a liaison, impactful projects that will benefit the resort area. So continue to do the great work you're doing.
Oh, thank you. Yes, those were great public sessions that we all attended. And as I mentioned earlier, we've been working on this project for about 20 years to get to the point where we are now, to carry us forward over the next 10 years. So there's been a lot of work, and I want to say thanks to our Chair, because he attended all those RASAP meetings, and he, he went to all of those. So thank you for sharing that as well.
Michael, and then Worth.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to follow up on Councilman Taylor's comments, but before I do that, I just want to take a moment to talk about, I agree with Vice Mayor Wilson about the T-shirts and more polos. But, but more than that, I really want to take a moment to applaud you for prioritizing the importance of professional development. I'm very surprised to hear that you don't, that you haven't had an opportunity to invest in professional development for your staff. These are very specialized jobs that, and skills that do require continuing education, where there are sometimes changing best practices that require sort of acute scientific understanding. And, and so I just think it's extremely important that your staff have an opportunity to attend conferences, trainings, coursework that relates to their job. And I hope that that's something that we can continue to invest in, not only for the aquarium, but, you know, frankly, I just want to make a point, I'm a strong believer in professional development. You know that I'm a museum professional myself, and I can tell you that one of the first conferences I ever attended in that space is the American Alliance of Museums, which many aquariums and zoos attend, but also I know there's a separate group for that. But, you know, it's amazing when people treat you like a professional, that you behave and perform as a professional, and take your job and work very seriously. And I'm looking forward to attending a museums conference just later next month. And this is a reminder, every year about, for me, a reinvestment in the work that I do, inspiration about why I entered the field in the first place. And so I just really want to really take a moment to applaud you for prioritizing that as part of the budget, and I hope that you'll continue to come to us to make sure that your staff not only has that professional support, but also has access to the information they need to do their jobs. So thank you. I also want to just make, follow up to Councilman Taylor's comments, and I've really been trying to digest this. I really think, I respect your request, and I appreciate your request. You know, just to summarize, I think what we're looking at is, over time, a three or four, $400 million project in today's dollars. And I, I think we need to understand, in addition to public investment, how we're going to pay for that as a city. I don't think anyone, including me, especially me, is questioning the value that the aquarium brings to the community, or has any thoughts about the, you know, anything other than good intentions for the health, welfare, and safety of the animals that are within your care. That is a huge price tag. And it's a huge price tag in the context of the infrastructure, educational, parks and rec needs, just down the line, recruitment and retention for staff workers. I really think we need to do much, much, much more work to have a better understanding as a council and as a public and community where that money is coming from. I know a large percentage of it will be coming from private sector, and that you have a study in place for that. But I don't know that the private sector and private philanthropy has the capacity for hundreds of millions of dollars in this region. I have really lots of understanding about philanthropy in, in the region for cultural institutions. So I, I just, you know, I, I just really think we need to really drill down on that and have a plan, and that we're clear with the public about what that means. I don't even want to, I haven't done the math on how many cents that is on the real estate tax, but it's, it's no, it's no joke. It's a lot of money. And, and I just want to proceed with caution, both in terms of how we speak about it as a community, but also what expectations we set, because we have to find a way to pay for that.
Sure. So two things I would say. First off, you are always welcome to come to the Association of Zoos and Aquariums arm of the conferences, so please join me as we attend those. So invitations always open. Secondly, no doubt, it has a big price tag, and we are working with the city manager on how we would, that's why we spread it out over 10 years. But I would say this, it's, it has a price tag, but it's an investment. It's an investment in your tourism, it's an investment in your cultural attractions, and it's an investment in your educational attractions, or educational component. So yes, it does have a big price tag, but it could be spread out over 10 years. You are correct. I do not believe the Hampton Roads community has hundreds of millions of dollars in philanthropic capacity. We're not sure what it is, because we haven't completed that fundraising study yet. But by delaying the project, you are only making that number go smaller and smaller, is, is, is the, the message that I have for you today. The CIP is a long-term investment. $3.7 million kicks it off, but it also shows a commitment to those donors, that you're serious about doing this, so that they can write their own checks or make their own commitments. So no doubt, I wouldn't want to sit in your chair and make the decisions about these huge projects that you're hearing about, but I would say this, that it's certainly an investment in the City of Virginia Beach's future.
No, sorry, as a follow-up, no question about that. However, I struggle in the, with, with the perspective that I have, with the notion of making hundreds of millions of dollars of an investment, and not being able to make those investments in other cultural amenities that we also value. So that's really the challenge, and it's hard to tell other institutions and organizations that we don't have any amount of money to provide to them while we're contemplating hundreds of millions of dollars. Not to diminish the importance or impact of the aquarium or any other organization, it's just a really challenging, that we, and my point is, we need to know more about how, what the funding source is for this.
Sure, absolutely, and I certainly support our other cultural institutions, and I would hope that this project could help provide additional capacity, so we could do more at our other cultural institutions, because the rising tide rises all ships as well, so...
Totally agree. Thank you.
Worth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Spanoulis, for that presentation. So to expand upon what both Councilman Taylor and Belucci have just said, I agree totally. And my thoughts, because I thought a lot about this, this is a very, very important asset to the state, to this region, our city. And I believe the impact is 280 million, $88 million per year, an indirect, direct and indirect impact on our city. So that being said, I think the cost is 200 to 300 million dollars, which is a lot of millions of dollars. So in my opinion, right now, I don't think we, as a city council, are in a position to address all that amount of money on our own. I'd like to propose and see a plan of the private sector stepping up, potentially another partner stepping up to help with the operations and the, not the operations, but in the ownership potentially, the state of Virginia, the region, and of course, or in the federal government for that matter. Just really think outside of the box. This is a very important topic, I think, for our city to do, to have this, the Virginia Aquarium thrive. And yes, it's competing with many other resorts. As this city turns 60 years old this year, and this turns 40 years old, we've got a lot of great projects in the pipeline now and have completed. We've got Rudy Loop, we have Atlantic Park under construction, other projects around the city are Parks and Rec. So there's a lot of constraints, our infrastructure, but I think we need, I think a grand plan to move forward. If we can, any more investment than we can afford at this point.
And if I could comment, I do appreciate your time spending with our fundraising consultants, and no doubt, that would be helpful to have a comprehensive plan. I will say that the fundraising piece, without the $3.7 million, I can't go out and ask the private sector for what they would potentially give without that piece in place, because their, first thing they're going to say is, what's the city's commitment? And I'm going to say, well, it's in year 2029, so, and they'll say, come back when it's committed. So, but no doubt, I don't think that you're wrong in having a comprehensive plan. I just want to caution you on that fundraising piece, that that may be missing in that comprehensive plan as we go forward.
Okay. Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Cynthia, thank you very much for the presentation and for all the work that you and your colleagues do at the aquarium. My question is kind of a follow-up to where you just left off, because I've always understood that 3.7 to be a fulcrum to get you to the, you know, to, to second base on trying to get additional commitments from, from the private sector. So taking that a step further, if, for example, the garage and the parking is funded, ends up being funded in an earlier out year, I guess, or, or more immediately, and then you turn to your potential donor base, and you find out your capacity and what you're able to do is much less than the 200 to 300 million dollars that, that you, you kind of initially put in front of us, then what? Does that turn into, well, let's, let's have a, let's have a look at redesigning, or let's have a look at, you know, a, a different plan and a different look for the next iteration?
Sure. I mean, you have some hard decisions to make, because you have failing exhibits now that you're going to have to pump millions into, regardless of whether we choose to do this big expansion plan or not. You're going to have to pump millions into these exhibits, because they're failing right now. So you have a choice. Can you, do you want to go down that road and, you know, fix the Honda that has 300,000 miles on it, or do you want to shop for the new? miles on it, or do you want to shop for the new Honda that's going to carry you into the future? So, not to plug a car dealer here. But, so that's a choice that we're going to have to make. I can't say what that private sector amount is going to be, but I know today, it's going to be greater than it's going to be in 2029, just because the changing landscape of the Hampton Roads, what the changing in the philanthropic community in Hampton Roads will probably be in the next five years. But when we get there, and we see that maybe it's a 300 million dollar project, and we can fundraise 50 million, I think we need to figure out how we stage, if we can build the expansion and move those animals into that, then maybe we delay some of the renovation project a little bit until we can catch up on that. Maybe we stage it that way, but you can come see the seal tank today. It's down, there's no water in it, the seals are not in it. You're going to have millions of dollars of expenditures at your doorstep here over the next few years, regardless of whether we do this plan or not. And you're not going to have any private sector investment, because people don't pay for deferred maintenance. That's not sexy and exciting from a donor's standpoint.
Okay. Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, it sounds like I heard that there may be an appetite for us to look at a comprehensive plan with options, right? And one of the options could be a different ownership model, right? You know, that's kind of, I heard somebody mention out there as well, was that maybe we look at to see, is that an opportunity where that could possibly be an opportunity for funding there? Is that something that council wants us to investigate, to possibly brief council on?
I think we should put all options on the table and have a discussion on this.
It's just one option.
It was just one option. You know, and anything else, you know, Patrick? You know, if I could just say, you know, there's a term I use sometimes that I've developed as U R P, ugly realities of politics. And I think right now, and I am really hoping and praying that this is what I call an anomaly year, you know, coming off COVID and coming into, you know, the heightened inflation and everything, and, you know, I think we should look forward hopefully to a brighter future with a lot of the initiatives that we've been taking. But the thing is, you know, we have to deal with this year first before we can move on. And we just had a, you know, tremendous presentation by the schools about their needs, and then the essentials of it. And, you know, I think Michael brought up the fact that we have many deserving organizations out there that are, for societal standpoint, you know, that we have to, you know, really take a look at. And so I would say, rather than get discouraged, I'd say, you know, let's just get through this year, and, you know, to make sure that, you know, we keep our ship afloat, you know, very, very well. And, you know, and, you know, we'll just have to take it from there. But once again, you know, realize that you are valued. But, you know, we have to show the value and find the balance, because once again, how do you convince a, you know, some folks out, you know, that are residents here that are, you know, having trouble paying their electric bills, and, you know, things of that nature? So it's critical that we find the balance, and like I say, this is an anomaly year, and so.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that. And if it can't go in this year, if it's in FY '25, that may allow me to have better conversations with some donors rather than FY 2029, but that could be a potential compromise. So I certainly appreciate the seats that you all sit in, and would not want to sit in your seats and make these hard decisions, so thank you.
But I concur with the manager. If we can maybe, you know, get some options on the table going forward, it would just give a light and a path to success.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Director Eileen Smith will come and give the proposed fiscal year '24 budget for the Human Services Department.
Rocky. What do you want, the aquarium in District One?
So I'm following the aquariums again. Every year I follow the animals, and actually, I really like seeing them, so I don't mind it a bit. Thank you for having me, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney. And I also have some wonderful staff here that I'd like to introduce. Angie Hicks, who's over our Behavioral Health and Developmental Services, there she is. Charlene Collins, who is our new deputy as of January over Social Services, there she, that's a nice wave, there you go, there you go. Raymond McAvoy, who has been just instrumental in pulling this very massive budget together for us. So, thank you to him. And of course, what would I do without Cindy, who is helping me with the slides? She always turns them right when I need it, so, thank you, Cindy. Okay. So the Human Services organization, we have about 1,187 city staff, and then you can add another 338 approximately contract staff onto that. So we're about 1,500 strong in Human Services, and it takes every bit of that to run the large organization that we have. We have four big divisions, and about 139 million dollar budget. So the bigger divisions that I'll talk about first here on this next slide are Social Services, where their budget's about 59 million, and Behavioral Health and Developmental Services is about 69 million. The other two divisions are your central administration, everything from finance to facilities to our fleet is in there, and then, well, that's Business Management, and then continuous quality improvement, where we have everything that we do to be licensed as an organization, investigations occur there on human rights issues and those type of things, as well as HRs in that area, and IT. Okay, so what makes up this budget? As you can see, we have, as I mentioned, money coming in from the state, as well as for both Social Services and Behavioral Health and Developmental Services. They have federal and state money that comes in. The state that comes in is about 41 million, and the federal is about 23 million. The general fund is approximately 33% of our budget. And we have transfer-in funds, which are really related to the sheriff's programs that we have, as well as our fees. I'd like to mention our fees, because we do bill a lot of Medicaid at about, let's see here, I want to say it's like 23 million, Raymond told me, the last check. So what's occurring in this operating budget for 2024? As you can see, we are going down in some areas, such as administration, but however, we've gone up in a few other ones. The reason that we go up is because we get state money generally, for permanent supportive housing, for some other programs under Angie, which is called the STEP program, system transformation money, anything related to mental health and substance use that goes in there. We actually, during FY '23, went down 10 positions, 10 of our, it was actually 11 of our positions, because we got one from the state. So 11 positions were moved to other city services, Public Works, HR, and Commonwealth's Attorney got a few of those. We are requesting, and it's in the city manager's budget, to have five of these restored that were a part of our pathways program. And what we would like to do is reutilize those for some creative programming that I'm going to tell you about in a little bit. Okay. I'd like to tell you about some accomplishments that we have in Social Services first. So in Social Services, child welfare finalized 66 adoptions in the past two years. 192 children have been discharged from foster care. This is a very large amount of kids that we have moved out of foster care. And 32 new foster families graduated from our New Generation Pride Training to become foster parents, or kinship foster parents in our city. This is very big for us. We are always looking for good families to host our children and have our children live with them, become a member of their family, and then hopefully move on to permanency and adoption. The benefits division, historically, we have struggled to make that 97% marker with all the applications, and what this means is, if it's an expedited application, you have to process it in seven days. If it's non-expedited, in 30 days. And when we were down, and still are down, some vacant positions, it's difficult to hit that marker, and it's very fast processing, of about 1,700 applications a month. So 1,700 are coming in, and when you have vacancies, where we've had anywhere from 25 to 30 vacancies in that area, it becomes difficult. But for nine consecutive months, we made it this last year. How we did that is, we actually engaged other departments in our region, so Norfolk, Portsmouth, wherever, and asked those staff who work full-time there, hey, would you like to pick up 10 hours with us? Maybe 20 hours with us, work on a weekend, work on evenings, help out our staff process these applications. And it has worked. So, we are now, in the other three months of the year, it was like 96%, so right close to the marker. This is a really big accomplishment, and I do want to congratulate Charlene on that, because as she came in, she really put some processes together with the leaders there and the staff, and it started to turn around well for us. Okay, so also in, I'm sorry, I'm having a little tickle in my throat here. In September of 2022, Employment Services also launched a hiring event, this is out at the HRC, so that they could get people jobs quickly, and many people were hired on the spot there. And so this has really been helpful to our community that comes into the Housing Resource Center. In BHDS, which is Angie's area, we implemented the Marcus Alert Program, and I've told you a little bit about that, and also worked with our city partners, 911 and the police, on the 988 crisis call number and expanding that, so that citizens can use that when they have a mental health crisis and get to a clinician fast. We expanded our Child and Youth Clinic Services within the Juvenile Detention Center, so we go over there and see the kids and provide them their clinical services right on site. And we hired two Child and Youth Rapid Response staff members. This is in partnership with the schools, and it's at the elementary, oh, thank you, how considerate you are. Thank you very much. And it's at the elementary schools. We have had 60 referrals so far, and we have visited 27 schools to evaluate and assess the children there. That program, actually, in one 24-hour period, we got 10 referrals. So it is exploding. We're going to need to enhance that and add to the staffing. Finally, we added a Behavioral Health Specialist to Community Employment Options, and they are serving the dual diagnosis program, or that's not finally, I've got one more. And they are helping them to get the services that they need. Sometimes this population is difficult when they have multiple diagnosis. So with that, we've been very successful partnering with both the developmental services side and the behavioral health side. Finally, for our agency, in December of 2022, and this comes around every three years, although you can get a one-year accreditation, we achieved a three-year accreditation from the Commission on Rehab Facilities Accreditation. And basically, they said they had no recommendations for us. They had a lot of consultations, which means if they look at a program in Florida or Texas, and they see something good going on, they'll tell you about that, it's a consultation. But we're one of the top 3% that they have reviewed, who have received no recommendations and a three-year accreditation. This is phenomenal. This is a big deal for our agency and for the city. And I definitely want to commend the CEO staff and all of our administration on that fantastic achievement. So what are some of the things that we're doing that are a little different that I need to talk to you about? As you know, the Pathway Center closed in November of 2021. And since that time, and we had about 16 beds originally in that program, but during COVID, we took it down to eight beds, just to have one person in a room alone and not have two in a room. We experienced, and everyone in the nation is experiencing this, a nationwide shortage of nurses and medical professionals, as well as clinicians. We were not able to keep and retain these nurses, and we needed to have them for 24/7 services, so all shifts, all the time. You can't run the program if a nurse wasn't there. So we weren't able to do that. Now what we're thinking that we're going to do is be a little more creative and change our programming a little bit, to open in the morning at this facility, and then go till about 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, with very intensive outpatient services, as well as a peer drop-in center. So people who are in need of a place to go, say it's their time where they want to potentially access a substance, go to a bar, this type of thing, they can come to the peer drop-in center and spend their time there in the evening, as well as get therapy. So this is what we're looking at doing, hoping, and it depends on licensure and all that, but I don't think we'll anticipate any problems there, of doing something like that in the summer. So there's five positions that I mentioned would be fed into that process, and would also be helpful for that rejuvenation of that program. The opioid abatement money, this funding actually comes to the city, doesn't go directly to Human Services. We've received about 1.4 million at this point. It's anticipated that on average, after that, we will receive between 300 and 500,000 annually. And so what we're looking to do, and we have been doing, is talking with all our partners in the city, such as the Sheriff's Office, the Health Department, EMS, a lot of different, Commonwealth Attorney, a lot of different other city departments, to find out what might be beneficial, working together, to spend the money in a way that's going to either be treatment or prevention-focused. And so we're going to come forward with a plan pretty soon, but some of the things that we have looked at is expanded jail services, adding some clinicians there that don't just do mental health, but also really focus on that substance use, substance use groups, that type of thing, helping the person to transition back into the community after they've been in jail, and get them that treatment that they need while they're there. We're also going to look at doing a little bit more for infants and toddlers, and that's working with the Health Department, so pregnant moms explaining and providing materials on what substance abuse can do while you're pregnant, this type of thing, as well as if a child has a family member who is using substances, and there's a risk for them to go into child welfare or into protection services, putting some wraparound respite around that family, so that the child isn't necessarily displaced immediately. So these are just some of the options that we're going to come forth with. And I do think that is it for the presentation.
Hey, any questions? Amelia?
Yes, ma'am.
First, Eileen, and we go way back, when, what was it, 2014 or so, I was vice chair for the state for the BH, Behavioral Health. And I'm excited of your accomplishments, especially the processing, 1,700 a month. That is amazing, so great kudos to you on, you know, what you have done and the benefits. So I just wanted to say congratulations to you and your staff.
Thank you so much. It's always been wonderful to work with you. I appreciate that, ma'am, very much.
Hey, anyone else at this point? Eileen, I just wanted to compliment you, because you were one of the key speakers at a region roundtable that the 757 Mayors on Youth Violence, and your announcement about the rapid intervention in the elementary schools was very, very well-received, and was kind of hinted on a bit with the school's presentation there. It's going to take a number of elements, you know, within our city to really go after, and I think, you know, especially after COVID, the demand for health and human services, the demand is exponential at this point.
Yes, it is.
And, you know, and a lot of it, and a lot of the problems right now are coming, they used to be adolescents, but now we're being told that it's four, five, six, seven-year olds are now included in the mix, in terms of people that really need, you know, those type of services. So I just want to say kudos for what you are doing, and the massive responsibility you have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And thanks, Jen, for getting the word.
Yes, yeah, lifesaver. Thank you very much, everyone, and thank you for your support always, appreciate it.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Communications Director Tiffany Russell will provide council a presentation on the fiscal year '24 Communications Department proposed budget.
I'm the last one for today. All right. Thank you, Dean. Oh, good, wonderful. All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I am pleased to talk to you about the communications team and some of our asks moving into the next fiscal year. To start, we are a small but mighty team of 25 communications professionals, divided into- into five divisions, which include engineering, the folks that allow our public to watch this meeting right now, and we also have our creative services team, employee communications, public affairs, which helps get information out about the programs and services that government offers, and also provides marketing communications support to departments that don't have that in-house capability. And then finally, our community engagement team, which came to us this fiscal year and is a team of one. Thank you, Nancy Bloom, for your hard work. We certainly support her and are excited to grow that function of communications. Our budget is 2.8. That's the proposed budget. What we're looking at adding is two FTEs moving into next fiscal year and an increase in software support for communication tools that can be, help support the enterprise of communication professionals across the city. Some of those tools are outlined here, starting with Sprout Social, which is a social media monitoring tool that we've piloted, and we're able to extend licenses to other departments to have a more of an umbrella approach to listening to our residents, hearing from them, and having a more coordinated approach to our response. Our project management tool can also be expanded. We do a lot of work, and having that workflow helps with efficiencies. And so what we'd like to do is expand those licenses to other departments, to those communications professionals. We are also needing to absorb expenses related to our Adobe Creative Cloud licenses that were once in IT and are moving over, and then Canvas, a graphic design tool that we design templates particularly for, let's say, recruitment that can then be used across all 30 departments. So just a little lift here in continuing that software support for efficiency and also quality control. The two FTEs that I'm looking at is a direct response to the increased request from our residents and from you for community engagement. So by having an executive assistant come on, what we'd be able to do is streamline our workflows. We have a lot of folks doing admin work that we could put into this one position to provide administrative support to the Communications Department so that we can increase our output in content development to inform the public more about the programs and services, plus decisions that are made here at council and how they impact that resident at the district level. There's also been a request for a shared-use community event calendar that could be utilized by city leadership, by council members, and the public to understand what's going on in the city, not just those events that are permitted by the city or are city-sponsored. So it would be more of a comprehensive approach to look at all the activities throughout the community. That would require a lot of collaboration, obviously, with our resort management permitting office, with IT, and all the departments that currently have their own separate community calendars and work to try to streamline that. And then the other request is for a full-time community engagement professional to directly support Nancy Bloom and our team. And what's really exciting about this is I've heard from the community, they want, they're really excited about the work that we have done. We've been able to pilot a lot of new tools to reach the community in ways that work for them. And I think you saw some of those tools we tested out as part of the election system community engagement, and we've gotten such great response to that. We want to continue it but dive even deeper to ensure equity in our community engagement. And there's a lot of nuances and special needs across the city that this person would be dedicated to really going and doing that direct outreach. In addition, using speakupbb.com and the Equity Mapping Tool to help us understand who we're hearing from, who we're not hearing from, and layer in those socioeconomic data points to help us be more strategic in our community engagement moving forward. Our initiatives underway, and I think this is my last slide that I have, are directly tied to the resident satisfaction survey. I'm so glad to have gotten those results because it's really helped the Communications Department think through, evolve, be nimble and flexible to change our communication plans. We're obviously focused on making sure the new virginbeach.gov website is complete. That is the number-two source of information for residents to understand what's going on in our city, and that migration is almost complete. We also want to increase our storytelling. I know we rely very heavily on our news partners to get the word out. We could be also increasing the articles that we produce in-house and put on our website and build that subscriber database. And then finally, I'd already talked about increasing that community engagement tool functionality and that outreach to neighborhoods. We have a database, but it's constantly changing, and we really need a dedicated person to do that direct door-knocking, who's your president, who do we need to talk to, faith-based communities, who's the person that wants to hear city news and can help us distribute this information out to the community? So it's a growing database, and you, as a council, are very helpful to help us grow that database. And then part of that is professional development to continue this good work, to ensure equity in our communications. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, not a question, but a comment. With the election system and having Nancy Bloom, you know, out there, she was at each of those standing and having that extra help for her to be one of this, she's done a great job. And also for the community engagement, when I wanted to make sure I had all my different civic leagues, she has put it in the master plan, what and what, and updating it. So, yeah, these other two are in need, and we're glad you added Nancy in there.
Me too. Those community meetings required so much support. I pulled in at least two other volunteers, volunteer facilitators, staff members from the city who wanted to help, plus our engineering team, and then Brian with the electronic side to ensure virtual participation. So certainly a heavy lift, but it's been rewarding, and we're really excited for this next phase that's in the works right now. 4, 4,500 direct mail surveys have hit homes to select residents, and the online survey for the election system input will launch tomorrow.
Okay, anyone else? You know, but Tiffany, I just wanted to thank you and your magnificent crew. There's no question that this council is, you know, determined that, you know, really seek further civic engagement on many things in the future, and you do tremendous, tremendous work, and for that, we thank you.
Thank you.
All righty. At this point, is there any council discussion initiatives or anything? Amelia?
Since I have my new legislative aide here, Dr. Johnson, if you'll stand for a minute. So, if you recognize, she was retired professor from Norfolk State. Very helpful already.
Okay, Josh, and then Sabrina.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to let the council and the public know that Councilwoman Ross Hammond and I attended on Saturday the 100th anniversary celebration of the Southampton Roads Bar Association and delivered remarks on your behalf that evening, Mr. Mayor, and expressed our appreciation as a city for them hosting their 100th anniversary gala here, for welcoming the first African-American Supreme Court Justice, Justice Powell, to be the keynote speaker and to honor their President Emeritus W.T. Mason. And I just wanted to acknowledge the Southampton Roads Bar Association's commitment to justice and fair and equal representation and their contributions to the legal community. And the event was extremely well-attended. There were probably more than 400 people there. It was tremendous. So that was number one. Number two, I hope you don't mind, and thank you, Councilman Taylor, for raising the issue of Shore Drive Phase Four. And yes, I was interviewed yesterday by Channel Three. There are lots of residents along the Bayfront, in particular in District Nine, in our Bayfront community, who are upset and confused about the delay and the deferral of the Phase Four road improvement project. And again, I want to thank you, to the city manager, for providing for some explanation in terms of the reasons for those delays. I just, I have to be honest with you in saying that a lot of those, while those explanations make sense, they don't, they haven't necessarily allayed the concerns in the neighborhood. And I want the residents of District Nine, the people who live in the Shore Drive corridor to know that the city manager and myself, we've been in communication about how to make sure that we get this project kind of back on track and pipeline for completion. And I do, it is a very, very important capital project for our district and for the city, considering the, anywhere between 6 and 7 million people visiting Virginia Beach who traverse along Shore Drive every year, but also for the residents who live there. It's not just a gateway to the resort. It is, it is an important part of our city and provides for not only a wonderful residential community, but an alternative for our own residents to enjoy the beach without having to fight the hustle and bustle of going to the resort. So for the residents out there who are concerned about it, I've heard you, I'm on it, and I hope to have, you know, some decent or better news in the future, recognizing that this is only, what, three months on the job for me here? So a lot of, what we're living with now has been the result of decades or more in the rearview mirror. So I want to pledge my commitment to see this through during my tenure, so.
Thank you, and I want to thank Josh and Amelia for covering at that event. I had the privilege of officiating a wedding during that time, so I was unable to attend. Okay, Sabrina?
I wanted to talk about a criminal justice forum that I attended on Saturday that just passed. There were several community speakers and community leaders there. One in particular, Norfolk Commonwealth's Attorney, Rahman Fadahi, was there and provided a lot of good information in terms of the nuances in the broken criminal justice system. Particularly, he talked about families and how incarceration impacts those families, but also talked about voter rights and voting rights being restored for those citizens who have been incarcerated. And this month, April, is Second Chance Month. President Biden, and I believe also Governor Youngkin, has promoted a proclamation that talks about second chance in terms of those who were incarcerated and some of the barriers they face as they reintegrate themselves into the community. There are barriers in terms of employment opportunities, healthcare services and benefits, as well as mental health services that they try to access and have potential barriers that they certainly are impacted by. And so this month is certainly a way to educate ourselves on ways that we can address those barriers. Particularly highlighted was, again, restoring those voter, voting rights for those individuals who have lost those rights when they were incarcerated, but as they reintegrate. Certainly, that there is current legislation in place that tried to ensure that those rights are restored, and I thought it was a particularly interesting and very needed topic to discuss this past weekend. Thank you.
And thank you. And Sabrina, you know, thank you. I just recently wrote a letter of support to the Commonwealth Attorney to restore somebody's rights. But, you know, believe me, and I don't want to seem like I'm always bringing forward the Hope Initiative, but, you know, during a session, Monica, you know, the Assistant City Manager, actually went to our jail and interviewed a number of, you know, the people that were incarcerated there. And once again, they said their biggest problem they have, and, you know, Rocky, I'm sure you'll say, they have no hope when they get out. What am I going to do and everything? And that's why as part of the Hope Initiative that we as a city are doing are going to be emphasizing, especially with workforce development, we have, we've already contacted Sean Avery from the Hampton Roads Work Council about, you know, special programs and educational programs that help those that are incarcerated, you know, once they are out, and, you know, work on transition programs that they can actually start hopefully working, you know, while they're, you know, serving their sentence. But once again, you know, Sabrina, thank you. I think that was a very, very timely thing. Thank you.
You're welcome. Team Lamb posted a pic of what's going on.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, Rocky and Amelia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm glad you brought that up, Councilmember Wooton, because I want to welcome everybody to the party because for the past eight years, the Virginia Beach Sheriff's Office has been at the tip of the spear of this. We have a reentry program that has yielded a 90% success rate right here in Virginia Beach, and so we have really been working hard on that. Like you said, Mayor, we're giving folks hope. We're trying to get them connected with jobs and get folks back in our community because we understand that you're not going to live in a jail forever. You're going to come back into District One or District Two or District 10 or wherever you go. You're going to be in our districts, and you're going to be our neighbor, and we understand the importance of getting education and jobs and making sure they can re-enter the community. So I've got three other things, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have the numbers are in from the Great American Cleanup on March 25th. And if I could get a drum roll, please. There we go. 31,000 pounds of dump litter and construction debris were cleared from the city's Marshview Park in just four hours by 49 volunteers, and I want to give them all a big hand. That was all. In attendance was on the front line of that. And another update I have is we had a Workforce Development Committee. We met yesterday, and we met with the school divisions, myself and Vice Mayor, and we met with the school division and communities, and we met with the business leaders in the community. We met with some faculty. And what we're looking to do is we're trying to provide students an opportunity after high school. If they don't necessarily want to go to college, we can find a technical skill that they can get involved in and maybe, and maybe be a welder or a carpenter or mechanic. There's so many options out there. So we're really drilling down on that and making sure that we give our young people some good options when they come out. And I think that's going to be a very productive committee, I really do. Now, this next one I bring to you with a little bit of sadness in my heart. And a hero was gone too soon. Virginia Beach Fire Captain Mike Chevy Cheverredi died yesterday, April 17, from occupational cancer. He had been battling a rare form of late-stage anaplastic thyroid cancer. Chevy worked the Good Friday miracle. The crash, when a Navy F-18 crashed into some apartments on Good Friday, 2012. No one was killed that day, but Chevy and four other Virginia Beach firefighters who were at the crash that day recently battled or are currently battling cancer. Chevy lost the battle yesterday. No one can say for sure that the jet crash caused the cancer, although the air was extremely toxic and hazardous that day. Chevy leaves behind a wife, who was a Virginia Beach schoolteacher, and a young son. He was quoted a month ago of saying, "If I went back there today, I'd do the exact same thing," because that's what we do. So I say to Captain Chevy, "You're a true hero, and rest easy. Your brothers and sisters will stand the watch. Thank you for your service." That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And Rocky, can you let us know about any of the arrangements?
Yes, sir. I talked to Chief Pravis today, and he said he'd keep me in the loop.
Yeah, I really would appreciate it.
Yeah, it's, sorry to hear that.
All right. Chris?
And I will thank you, Rocky, for acknowledging Chevy and his family. I had an opportunity to attend a fundraiser in November that the family held, very involved in our community, and our condolences. Yesterday, Councilwoman Ross and I had an opportunity to attend the Housing Advisory Board Monthly Meeting, and just wanted to, we're about a month out, announce that in conjunction with Housing and Neighborhood Preservation, we do have a date for the Housing Summit, and that will be May 24, 2023, at the Orbin Dorf Central Library. So if there are any council members that... So if there are any council members that have any interest, we do need to notify staff so we can put out that public notice. And we'll be discussing workforce, affordable, and some of the housing challenges here locally and hopefully trying to provide some clarity around the vision and what we want to accomplish.
Good. And thank you, Chris, for working with the planning commissions group that got together, working with Mayor Tuck and the others. And your involvement is definitely more than appreciated by us.
Thank you.
Amelia?
First of all, Rocky, maybe we can have a moment of silence when we go to.
You know, I'll tell you what. We'll do that tonight.
Yes. I also wanted to mention something in the water is up and moving. And they've got Jennifer and myself. I've even bought sketches now. Yes, we went to the, there was the yellow forum that they had in Norfolk. And the two of us was on Community Day, and people really enjoyed it. They said, "We can have more of this." And I almost got thrown over when I pull out the raffle, and this Filipino family won the special raffle for tickets. And he came up, "Thank you." Luckily, I had on my sketchers. I was like, "Oh." But we're looking forward, you know, to the actual thing and it's building momentum. Other thing, I was very humbled recently, and some of you saw it, that was put out on the news break and to the New Journal and Guide to be the first Black woman to chair the Hampton Roads Transit Commission. Tomorrow, got to go down to transportation.
Well, you know, God bless you for doing that. And you've been representing a city globally for a while and is very well deserved recognition.
That's all.
Okay, Jen?
I had my District 10 meeting last night, and I wanted to send a thank you to Phil Pollan from Public Works, Captain Mike Clark from the 1st Precinct, Lieutenant Will Gervin from the 4th Precinct, and then Drew Linkford, Lauren Hopkins, and Taryn Denham with the city for helping to organize and to give updates. So I appreciate your efforts. And then for families who are not planning to attend something in the water but are looking for something to do next weekend, next Saturday, April 29, from 8:30 to noon, Parks and Rec is co-sponsoring with Grow Smart, which is a pre-literacy program with economic development. There's a free event at Mount Trashmore from 8:30 to noon. So it's in Awareness of Child Abuse and Prevention and the Month of the Military Child. So there's a fun run, DJ, inflatables, children activities, and community exhibits. So next Saturday at Mount Trashmore, 8:30 to noon, a free Family Day for any who are interested.
Thank you. And thank you both for the liaisons. This is going to be a spectacular event. It's going to be a legacy from now on. Really help boost a lot of things. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Okay.
So under ordinance and resolutions, I have to say on number one, does anybody have any issues with? Under K, ordinance and resolutions.
Okay, anybody?
So under planning, number one, David Emery, Chris De Meyer. Number two, Born Perpetitive LLC, Modern Savage Investments, District 6.
Consent, fine with me. I'll stand up.
And so, by the way, so far, we don't have any speakers.
So far, no speaker.
So far.
As we know, things are subject to change.
Number three, B&amp;B Associates, Manila Drive, and that is District 1.
No opposition.
Number four, Joe White, Pembroke Square Associates, District 4. Excuse me, District 9, excuse me. Number five, Ocean Chilling, that's District 5. That's on consent. And number six, Michael. Beyond Dela, okay, Beyond Doolittle. Beyond Doolittle, District 6. I gotta practice on that one. Number seven, Camus Properties, District 6.
No opposition.
Okay.
All right. At this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes: publicly held property; discussion or considerations of acquisition of real property for the public purpose of the disposition of publicly held property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A 3, and that would be District 2 and District 6. Security matters; a discussion of plans to protect public safety as it relates to terrorist activity or specific security threats or vulnerabilities, and briefings by staff members; legal counsel or law enforcement or emergency services concerning actions taken to respond to such matters or related threats to public safety discussion or of information excluded from the chapter pursuant to subdivision 3 or 4, Sections 2.23705.2, where discussion in an open meeting would jeopardize the safety of any person or the security of any facility, building, structure, information technology system, or software program, or discussion of reports or plans related to the security of any government facility, building or structure, or the safety of persons using the facility,